Okay, at seven o'clock folks will call us many in order and stand for the pledge. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amendments to the agenda.
So it turns out Mr. Eaton won't be able to attend our meeting tonight. The board wants to postpone it.
Let's do that if we can get here sometime so we can take his hand at least. Anybody else got anything? Should we, we talked about, talking about the water problems at the trailer park. Do we have any kind of, do we have a need to talk about that we promised?
We, if we came to an agreement, she made payments on her.
Okay, you can just report on that later. Alright, then there are no amendments going once, going twice. Okay. Minutes for July 30th.
I'm hoping to approve the matters as presented.
Is there a second? Any additions, deletions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting with Rescue Squad.
Well, we, as you could see the letter, I brought it from Liz, she wasn't able to come tonight, but he was up and running, I think, the seventh or, I mean, about three weeks before we thought.
You redistruced it?
Yeah. She got it, she noticed the plans on him, or she got to, you know, a heck of a lot of work that she's done there, and we've been interviewing, we interviewed two today, but they need two weeks. And one of them, working back, he's just a plain, I don't know. Hopefully by the end of the month we'll have a, get together going.
The letter, probably, we'll put it in the minutes, I'll give you the whole letter. Is that alright? Can't be, can't tell you everything, you better listen once in a while. It's a letter from, from Elizabeth Orr, who is-
Elizabeth?
Elizabeth Orr, O-R-R. And she is, her title is Field Supervisor Fairhaven Rescue Squad.
Okay, I got it.
Okay? I'll give you, just, I'll hit the highlights and then, then if anybody wants to see the whole letter, they can, they can look at it. Right, it'll be attached. Liz Orr is an advanced EMT with experience in Middlebury Ambulance, horrible first response, and business and management skills, is a dairy farmer for 29 years. As of this afternoon, this is dated August 7th, we have ambulance 5251 staffed and answering calls 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. We have one overnight shift covered also. We have, have hired one additional full-time AEMT, who is assisting me in many of the organizational tasks that are need updating. As should come as no surprise, anybody, our tasks have been a bit overwhelming. We, we had to strip our primary ambulance bare, many supplies were outdated and unusable. We inventoried all, many medical bags, brought them up to standard, and in date materials and in workable condition. As of now, ambulance 5251 is stocked and running at the, at the AEMT level, which is, what does, what does that exactly mean, do you know?
It's just under paramedic, we don't have a paramedic yet.
Okay. Which we rarely did anyways, we are-
Well, yeah, we did have a couple that were-
Yeah, we did, okay. Liz says, "I have started reorganizing the work area and staff quarters with help of Amy, a computer has been found and now has been assigned to all siren reports. No longer will private computers be allowed for siren, siren reporting." This is a short account of my first five days, and I'm, I'm just hitting the high spot, so, so her goals are is to follow continually, continually build, train staff for 80 to 100% coverage, this will take time. We have lots of new faces and much youthful energy walking through the door. Build staff morale with in-house team building and monthly training. Educate staff in new standard of Fairhaven Rescue Squad. Quicker response times to leave the building, standard care for equipment and vehicles, and daily expectations, in-house responsibilities. EMR and EMT classes held in Fairhaven. So, they're on the, they're on the mend, I mean, this is really kind of positive. It's, now, they, they, like you said, they have, she's on, she's taking already pre-scheduled vacation, but there's people there that are gonna be there to cover. That's, I mean, that isn't gonna happen overnight.
No, for sure. It's real good, I think, so far, since you've been there. Covered a lot of, it's, needs to be an environment, better, better environment there where you go in, and like, like down in there, a little bit, I guess, interviewing people, you know.
Anybody got any questions?
I know. What town do you, are you the director from?
Hampton.
Hampton?
New York City.
Why is it we never see our director in here? Is the bingo more important than these meetings? I think, I think what's going on here is pretty important, I think. She is our director, she should be in here.
You know, yes, Judy is the bingo person.
I feel this is more respective here.
But she's, she's had our shift still. It's up to you, Paul.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen her anytime that I've been on this board. Never seen her at a meeting, so.
I was gonna ask the same question, too.
Might suggest friendly that she might attend one of our meetings. I think you're doing a good job, I think you're, I think there's-
I have tried to, I'm sure that-
We're not knocking, let's get it done. I think this lady you hired from Middlebury, I think she's on a stick, I think she's really trying to hire you.
Really, your directorship being very active, you're the biggest talent in this.
That's where, well, I'm, where I'm going from, I guess. Appreciate everything you're doing, I don't give you honor.
You're the first to know.
Well, maybe, if you could contact, contact her and just-
Extend the invitation?
Yeah. She may, she's been on the board for a long time and it's, maybe just get to the point where she doesn't want to be on there anymore, I don't know. I don't know, but we should see her anyways.
So, is the game plan that at a September meeting, we're gonna hear back from somebody? I know we're working, but we're, for a little, I, I like these progress updates, because you're doing a great job.
I think, the way I read the letter, I think, the lady from Orr, I think she wanted to come to the meeting, but she was, this is her vacation time.
Right, she had a previous-
She had a previous meeting tonight, her vacation's, her two weeks in September.
Yeah, I know, because she talked once before, when we were at the Rescue Squad, then she wanted to come into the board meeting and explain what's going on.
Well, we're, we're-
And she's invited anytime she wants to come in here.
We're meeting August 4th, that she wants to, she, one of the questions I would ask, I would, I would have asked her tonight, is like a, a basic breakdown of the budget that the Rescue Squad works under. I mean, we, we contribute this year, it's up to, up to $50,000, which we haven't contributed yet, but the taxpayers contribute, that's not a lot of money, obviously. That doesn't cover, that doesn't cover a lot of the budget, but if we just knew, we knew what we were talking about, and the townspeople knew what they were talking about, because they, they need to know what it really costs, and, so, it might help if, it doesn't have to be very detailed, it's just, I mean, just a high spot.
Well, about, like, getting into more and more such, but, now, like, like your Medicare and that, they, you get paid like 54% of what you're billed. And then at the end of the year, the state wants to report 3% of that.
Yeah, see, that would be good to know, all that kind of stuff.
And, I don't know, the contract, I don't know, and, what are they gonna help us on that? When they only pay 54%, and then they take 3 and 3.3% back, I mean-
Yeah, I don't even understand what-
The chunk of change and extra socks on.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense to me why they have, have a right to cut.
Since we cut it in half right here in Star Springs, yeah.
But anyways, if she, you know, we're, we're meeting the 27th, and if she can make that meeting and wants to give a basis, we'll make time to, to do, just a quick idea, so I think, yeah, I think it'd be helpful.
If you can't make it, I'll come with something, whatever you got.
I have one more question.
Yep.
When they figure what they ask the towns for, is it per capita? Is it so much per person? What, you know, you don't happen to know what that rate is right now?
For your town?
Yeah. Is it, is that the same for every town? Per capita?
I don't know, if Vermont is, probably is Vermont, but over in Arlington, we just got, you know, my flubbusters that, but it was like $1,600 a year we paid, which went up to 32, that just doubled, you know?
But I mean, I'd just like to see what it is per capita, you know, I mean, what we're, what you're-
I'm sure it's 20.
Okay. Thank you.
Very positive, but-
You just wonder if everybody's the same per capita.
Right, yeah, every town is the same per capita, is what I, what I'm questioning. You know, same.
Anything else, folks?
I have a perfect answer for your next one.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate the work you're doing so far, I mean, it's, you're starting basically from scratch and working, but not easy.
Everything is, that's for sure. Hard to say, it's positive. Got some housekeeping to do, break the place up a little bit. But we gotta get people on the roster to make the runs, and the other stuff will follow on.
Thanks.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, I'll see you next month, then.
Yeah, well, the 27th.
27.
27, if, if you don't mind. Or you can send, you can send our rep.
Alright.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, see you later. Five minutes for public comment.
Hello?
Yeah, I, I'm Lynn Howard, I live up at the Beaver Meadow, and I talked to the town manager, and the town foreman, Sam and Joe, about the beavers damming up on the end of my property, and I have a copy of the original survey of the road from 1814. Sam was saying that the town only owns to the culvert, and this here survey says it goes to the outlet of the Beaver Meadow, which in 1814, there wouldn't even have been a culvert there. So, that's Sucker Creek. What I wanted was for the town to come in and address the Beaver Dam, and, and help bring it down, and repair the road where it's washed out, this would be the third time, and replace that culvert, but was, Sam told me that that wasn't a town road, but I have the proof that it is. It goes to there. But my, my concern is, this is a Class 4 town road. But my neighbor, my closest neighbor, Cody Lebig, lives on a Class 4 town road, where the town goes every year to clean out the culvert at the end of the road where the beavers dam it up. And I think I personally should have that same kind of consideration. That's what I had to say.
Culvert that she's talking about, the be, the beavers ain't damming it up.
That culvert's been plugged for years, it's sifting right through the road there, that's why the road's so-
And we had, we had the, the state guy come up, that deals with beavers, and was putting in a, I don't know what he, beaver-proof culvert? Yeah, well, it's thing that goes over the dam, so that drops the water down, and so, and now it was supposed to have been done.
Nothing's been done, and I haven't heard from anyone. I would like that information, who we talk to, so that I can talk to that person.
I wasn't, I didn't either. But, so, what happened up near Lynn's house is that there've been beaver problems out there in the past, the state came in and installed what they were calling a beaver-proof culvert.
Beaver baffle.
Beaver, yeah. Beaver baffle.
It turns out it's not so beaver-proof, and it plugged up, and then, yeah, the beavers were just running out of it. And it turns out it didn't work, so the water started to go over the road. We did go out and look several times, and we brought the state in because we understood they had done that. And the state came up, looked at the, the culvert, and they said, "Yes, we will fix this." That was a month ago, two months ago? So, it has been a little while, and we haven't heard back from the state, so we'll have to follow up.
He's, he's one person that covers the whole state. One person.
It's not like we just didn't do anything, we, we called the state, and they, they said they would fix it, and the state hasn't followed up, so we will follow up with the state.
Gotta go see, because that gentleman that came there isn't the person that's gonna fix it, I mean, I'm sure it's gonna be the highway department that's gonna fix it. So, they're just down the street here, so let's get a hold of the state, and kind of rattle their cage a little bit.
Yeah.
See if they can't help her out, so we can get this open.
It's like the railroad, pushing the load.
I mean, if it's gonna bother the road, you know, I mean, that's, that's my concern, I mean, if it's gonna start building the water, pushing the water behind it, then you're gonna get a, all of a sudden, you're gonna get a road gun, I mean, you have to see-
The last time I was up there, Jay, the water wasn't over the road.
It wasn't, yeah, well-
Well, I know if you took the dam down somewhat by hand.
I mean, we got all this water in the springs, I mean, it's bound to be high and-
Well, it gets the Class 4 maintenance that it's supposed to, though.
But the other, the other thing is, the beaver are gonna end up in up in Niman Pond, and we don't want them up there.
We don't want anything up there in Long Town.
If the state does come in and says they're gonna fix it, that's what I'm just saying. We, we get on the state and get them up here to get it, get it done.
So is it the state's responsibility, it's the state's and not the town's responsibility?
Probably, probably because the beavers are involved.
We, we reached out to the state, and the state sent somebody down and talked to us. So, yeah, it's, it's the state's responsibility.
The state owns the waterways.
And if they don't follow up in a timely manner, and they won't intercome and everything, I mean, what will sound to them?
Good question.
Call the state and poke them.
No. There's, there's, there's a, there's a man, there's a statutory requirement that we, we do maintenance once a year on a Class 4. So, we'll, we'll do what we have to do, that's our, that is our responsibility, but the state has claimed responsibility, so we'll let them have the chance first, but, I mean, I just-
Well, I agree, they should be somewhat responsible, they have a right of way over that road and 2,000 acres up on the hill that people come and go and log and hunt, and so they're using that road constantly. But my question is, how can the town go to another Class 4 road and help them out with their equipment and not come to me? Why are they handing me off to the state, that you don't do that for Cody Lebig?
Well, that's, that's what I was saying, the culvert, the way the water goes out of the dam is not plugged. The one, that, the one that you're talking about, that was underwater that day that I was up there, is because of high water. The water was down the last time I was up there, and the water was going through that culvert.
I don't believe that water can go through that culvert, I tried unplugging that culvert years ago, it's got rocks in it and everything. But that's, that's still, that's the question, why is the town free to go to Cody's land, which is Class 4 and not mine?
We're not, we'll take care of yours just like we take care of Cody's. That's what we're gonna do.
And, and what you're asking is to get the culvert either cleaned or replaced, I'm still, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I'd like you to address the Beaver Dam itself, you say you have an excavator, I don't know why you couldn't pull some of that stuff out of there.
I'm not pulling that dam apart, that excavator.
The state owns the water.
I don't know, I'm sorry.
You can't stick that in the water.
You can badmouth me all you want.
I'm not bad about the new Sam.
I think we start-
I regret about the road ending at the culvert, though, I have it in here.
No.
I think we get up to the state, that's what I think, get them in here.
We'll get, we'll address this.
We'll bring a report back to the board, if you guys are having some thoughts.
Yeah, we need to know, we need to know, we need to know what we're talking about.
Right.
I'm not up there very often, or, I'm a little sorry. Maybe you are a little bit, but-
I've been up there a long time, I should.
And Lynn, honestly, I haven't heard from you, so I thought they took care of it.
No.
No, okay.
Well, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in.
Have you been up there for a long time?
Yeah.
Oh my God, that's, that's, that's where I wanna put it.
Thanks, Lynn.
That's off the grid.
Oh man.
Where is this place?
I have a question on-
Up in Niman Pond, more.
Are they planning on finishing that this year? Last year, they left those big gullies, and I know a few cars went off into the ditch, and we almost went off a few times. Are they, I know they've been working on it, so are they planning on finishing that this year?
Yes, I got ban rail, I'm gonna put upstairs that hill, so it'll keep you out of the ditch, so, yeah.
Oh, yes, there's one more thing. So, the transfer station. Now, I realize there's been a, a changeover of different people working there, et cetera. Is there a plan to get a new full-timer there, or are there just gonna be fill-ins? And, the woman who is working there, who has been working there, is not a people person, so she's been having to deal with the public, and it's not been pretty. And Neil and I went to the dump on, was it Saturday? It was Saturday we were there, we weighed in with the trailer, and we waited for a long time, there wasn't anybody around except in front of us, we didn't hear anything, and then all of a sudden I thought I heard, "Okay," the "okay" signal. So I said, "Neil, you can go." So we went, and she rolled out of that office screaming, pointing, carried on for five minutes screaming to get back on there, "Nobody told you to get off that scale," and she had a complete meltdown. And, so, needless to say, it was pretty disturbing to have to stand there and deal with that. And, so, my, I just, I was trying to think of different ideas, she's obviously not a people person, she doesn't want to deal with the public, she's not been friendly to me in the past at all, and I've never really had to talk to her much, because, was it Alan who was always there? Yeah, I mean, you know, he was very jovial. But, so, I'm trying to brainstorm ideas, like what can make things easier, I mean, is somebody else coming in to take over for Alan, or could be put, like, I don't know how much it would cost the town, but to put in a stoplight, like a green and a red stoplight, something like that, that tells people, because even, like, with, with the trailer, we can't really hear real good when we're way ahead, or if there's motors, and I know other places have things like that.
That's not the dumbest idea we ever heard.
The speaker doesn't work all the time.
You can just put that light up on the hut, it doesn't need to be wired all the way out, it could just be up.
Right, we don't have it.
Once people knew.
That, right now, we're in transition, one fellow's retiring.
Right.
And, so, there'll be, there'll be probably fill-ins there until we get, the, a full-time person back.
And then, I mean, just, I'm just trying to make it easier, so it doesn't happen to somebody else, because it was pretty upsetting, just the way it all happened. But even a sign that says, you know, "Please wait until you," or if she just pops up, if it's gonna be a waiting, says, "Just a minute, I'll be right with you."
You don't deserve, you're accosted, because you may-
What time of day was it?
It was the state, I mean, we did, we, I honestly thought I heard, I looked, Neil said, "Are you sure you heard someone?" I said, "I heard someone," and I looked behind us, I said, "Well, there's nobody else that pulled in, so it's nobody talking." I think they had their speaker on, and they were talking, and I think that's what I heard, because when I left, and I was standing outside talking to somebody, they had their speaker on, and I could hear them talking. So I think that might be what happened, I'm not sure. But she also complained about the computer, she said the computer's a pain in the neck, and it's very difficult to reset everything, I don't know anything about it, but-
How's it going?
So, perhaps she's having, you know, some kind of struggle with the computer, I don't know.
Well, it's not your fault.
No, but I just was trying to make it easier for the next person.
It's not your fault, and you don't deserve, none of you guys, nobody in town deserves to get yelled at by a town employee.
We will-
We'll address it.
That's fine, I mean, it's, you know, I mean-
I was there.
We will, we will take care of that, we, I have moved another guy in there permanently, so, but Abby's on vacation for two weeks, so we do have one guy that's gonna fill in, but there is, there's a permanent guy there, so, so, and as far as the light, we'll see what that's gonna be, and we'll get that-
Is it Jim, Jim's gonna be there permanently?
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Anything else, then? Stop by anytime.
Good night, thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Moving right along, anybody? Department head reports?
Uh, we've been out patching potholes, trimming brush, got that all up through here, all taken care of. They put out five ton Friday on potholes. Still ain't got them quite done yet, so, so-
What happened Friday?
Potholes, we put out five ton of asphalt.
Asphalt.
So, got the brush hog on the tractor, tried that out, works great, so, had to rebuild the whole top, but got it so it doesn't throw rocks out the top.
Have you, have you been on any roads with it, or the tractor?
I didn't, and that was, he just, his insurance wouldn't cover me, so, but I took it around the shop, mowed that, and it works, works great.
Is he gonna let us use it for a few days, just to make sure that it's gonna work, put on it?
Well, that's, I took it out, so, I mean, I, I can't see nothing, I mean, everything works.
I just, I, well, he did stop one day there after you and I talked, when I went down, I mean, I didn't start it or nothing, but, you know, the tractor looks like it's been maintained well, I mean, it looks, you know, a neat paint job, but that's beside the point, it is a four-wheel drive. You know, you, you've started, you've had it running, it does, if it doesn't use oil, it doesn't smoke, and everything works on it, hydraulics work on it. You know, it's, it's not a bad, it's, it's not a bad price for what you're looking at, and, right now, we really need, I've had a lot of complaints about the roads, which there's nothing you can do about it, we can't be able to mow them, but, I'm sure, if we can get them out, you know, get the tractor out there and get some roads done, I mean, it's-
That's what I'm thinking.
You gotta put safety lights on that, too, then.
Yep.
It's a question.
Flashing lights.
He's gonna be pushing the button.
Um, we did, we did have one problem, down to the transfer station, that bobcat, the bucket fell off it, so-
The pins are worn?
They broke.
They broke? You can just buy that pin, though.
It wrecked the arm, ripped the piston off, broke the piston off, bent that.
It's, it's not just the levers?
No, this, where-
Repairable?
Money, but it's an 86.
That's old.
I'm thinking the town's got their money out of it.
Oh, we don't might have replaced it, but right now.
What replacement, Guff?
Uh, I think one was 38.
Do we have it in the budget?
Um, I think so. I think I can...
In the budget?
I think I can...
In the budget?
In there, is there?
No, I mean, I mean, it's a regular equipment budget.
In the regular equipment budget, no. I could, I think I could squeeze it out sometime, but that's different.
Well, forty thousand on the regular budget, per regular budget?
It's gonna be paying.
Paying.
Oh, paying straight out of the budget.
We better think about it.
Yeah.
Just not, I just, just nothing for, it sounds like you guys really discussed that.
If we're doing this, if it comes down to the point where we gotta replace the bobcat that's down there, my suggestion was to be a little heavier bobcat, a little bigger bobcat for the town office.
Yeah.
Take the one that's down there up there. I mean, if we're gonna do it, we got, we've got the new blower, we got the new V plow, everything like that. Um, I would rather see a little bigger machine at the town office, their town garage, and take the one that you got there. I mean, if it comes down to the point where we can buy one. I'm not saying we're going up there.
Can, uh...
That would be the plan I'd like to see happen.
You too.
Can you run a track machine?
Yep.
The only reason I'm asking is they say that when they push the snow blower, it just stops. And then I said chains, they said there wasn't room. So, if you're looking at one, at least price a track machine.
Why can't we do a rubber truck?
That's the one, that's the one I priced out.
Somebody told me that wouldn't turn on pavement.
Sure will.
I think that's a lie, but...
It'll turn.
It'll turn anyway.
Trust me, it'll turn anyway.
I think it costs you something in tracks.
They, they actually suggested the track one.
Yeah.
Cause I told him what I was doing with it and he suggested the track was...
That price isn't tracks.
Yes, it's tracks. Bobcat gives an unbelievable discant to the town.
Let's, let's look into it and see what we got. I mean, that's, I'm not, like I said, I'm not saying we're gonna purchase one, but let's see what we can do.
I think, I think I heard you say that.
We're gonna do it. We've gotta, we have to do...
You would do what we got?
We gotta do it with what Sam's talking because I feel with a little better machine for what they're doing and like Jeff just said, with the track machine.
If you're doing it, again, heavy enough, not so heavy that breaks all your sidewalk.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying something that's got a little more power.
It'd be nice if you could build a rack on the back of it or something for that sand standard so that it's a nice little sidewalk machine for the winter. Cause that's the local, what it does anyway.
Yep.
If, if you're gonna buy it, let's focus on something we probably need to address.
Something we could use for getting them down.
On top.
Something that's got a little spinner on it.
Yeah.
For your sander. Not just something that just drops, gobs.
Your man. Really like a real sander.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Something with a little spinner on it that you can... Again, let's drop that bridge.
Man, I was up... Saint Mike's, right next to Saint Mike's. They, they had like a tractor this winter. Little snowplow on it. It was, it wasn't a mower, it was just a little tractor.
Yeah.
That seemed to work awesome.
But I do...
It was a little buggy.
Let's look into it. That's the best we can do right now.
You two get on the same page?
I don't know.
Yeah, we were...
There on...
Yeah, this just happened. We wanted to let the board know what was going on.
Yeah.
We'll break back options next week.
So this, what happened down there, is it broke in the bucket itself or the...
Must be the... Where, where the pins hooked to the arms.
Okay, on the, on the...
Down at the bottom.
The whole quick attach plate came on.
Okay.
Everything.
But we're gonna be able to use the one you've gotten up here. If you need to do work down the transfer station, you're gonna use the one up here?
Yeah, we're talking down there.
Okay.
Is that why I saw the forks in the back of it?
Till we get it fixed.
Why the forks are in the back of the dump?
Yeah. I wear it on my... But that is like thirty years old.
Oh.
You're talking thirty-year-old piece of equipment that hasn't really had a great life.
No.
What else you got?
That's it.
Questions, comments?
No. What's the guardrail gonna look like going up over that road? What's ribbon, what'd you say?
Main rail? Yeah, it's what they have on the interstate.
It's the wider, the post every ten feet.
No, it's four feet, uh, four feet this post.
Did you... Where's this?
Up on Big Lock.
Oh, okay.
How do you put those in?
Big hammer.
Do you have to...
We, I think we can push it in with the excavator. Long as there ain't no...
When they have a...
On, on a, on a road job, they gotta hammer and pound some in.
Yeah, they gotta pound there.
But I think, like he's saying, I think what, everything's fresh up there. I mean, you've done so much work up there.
Yeah.
I think he's right. I think you should, might be able to just push them in with the excavator, push them in. Did, what we talked about today, did you talk to Sam about it?
What'd we talk about?
Up on the top where the railroad tracks?
I let Nate know.
Okay. So it's all, that's all, that's it? Okay.
Both sides rode all the way through or just on the big hill?
Well, I'd like to do it both sides, but I stayed on the gaming so much, so I'll see what I can do.
Gonna bring that in pretty good, isn't it? I don't know.
I don't think so. I don't think so. I should still have my regular road.
Okay.
So I won't be narrowing it up any.
Perfect. Just asking.
I got one question I guess.
No.
Up on Scotch Hill, where you filled in on the other side of the road there with the cratons? And you're gonna have to put some more logs in there?
It's next to the...
On Scotch Hill? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Looks like we need a little more.
Yeah. Yeah, when I get back, I'll jump on that, get that shaped up and taking care of it for when winter comes.
Patching the holes up there did a pretty good job.
Yeah. Cause now I gotta shift into fall work, start doing the drains and washing cars and...
Painting.
Great stuff.
One more question. Making, uh, sidewalk crossings and what about the stop signs? Is that gonna happen this week?
Yeah. This week, I can get onto the guys, but I'll come in tomorrow.
School starting pretty quick.
Yeah.
And there's one, when he stopped the school, busting red flash and lights over here on, uh, Norveen, but he can't read.
All right.
They should be able to, cause, cause I guess Jim, Jim now comes in when he's not at the transfer station. So, got another hand.
Anything else for Sam? Chief?
Got a couple things. I put the July report in your box. We had interesting arrests in July when we reviewed them. Busy. Stuff out of the norm, a few different dusts and a lot of people. New car is marked and progressing towards getting in service. It's, it's a priority at this point. I can tie up on other stuff, but it is marked. Uh, that was done on August seventh. Supposed to be the sixth. They backed me up a day, but that is back in the barn. Um, I started sending out violations of the jump ordinance I sent out, um, a couple months ago. Um, I don't know, Joe, Joe did, the last boardman was in Virginia, representing the town and the state, uh, Department of Public Safety in Virginia. They asked us to do the keynote address on, uh, our situation at the high school. And then we had two ninety-minute breakout sessions. And what was interesting was during that, we had a sergeant raise his hand and said that he was a detective sergeant from Pinellas County, Florida. And he was in charge of doing the review of Park, which happened the same day. And he came up afterwards and shook each other, each other hand. He said, you guys did everything right. And you'll see tomorrow where they did everything wrong. And it just, after watching the three hours of Parkland, it was a disaster from the school to the parent. Everything was a disaster with that, the FBI. And it just brought some solace back that if one thing had gone wrong here, we might be on the other end. So, I think it was really nice to see like what they did and if we did right. Not turning to our horn, but again, just look at one thing. If it was just one person dropped the ball, it could've gone the other direction. But it was, that was a very interesting experience. To go down, it was thirteen hundred people, Department of Education, Department of Public Safety.
And good visibility for the town. You guys did a good job.
Um, I think that's all I have. Is there any questions or anything?
Questions, comments? No? Nothing?
Okay, uh... Sounds good.
Good, nothing. Uh, a little bit of communication. The state of Vermont is still asking us, and this is mostly for the public, there's, the state of Vermont is still asking us for a deputy health officer. If anybody wants to sign up and take on that role here in Town Fairhaven, we appreciate it. And we're also missing, uh...
Is that something we could advertise?
Oh, we've, yeah, we've, a couple of times put it out there. Nobody, nobody seems interested. Um, Rutland, Rutland Regional Planning Commission is also looking for a commissioner. So if somebody in, uh, in town would like to take part in that, um, we're also looking for a representative out there.
You don't have a representative now?
Uh, we do, uh, no. Her, her time expired in July, July first term.
She, she hasn't asked to be reappointed or anything?
No. That was, Roseanne was the backup. It was the young lady from Fairhaven.
Oh, Ashley?
Yeah.
I thought she was gonna, she said she was...
Yeah. Park sent a letter saying thank you for the thirty-five hundred dollars to their organization. The board approved that in the last ballot. Uh, if you read the paper, there's a few things. There's some excess equipment out for sale right now, for our Fairhaven. The board will have the opportunity to say yes or no to what, you know, what bids come in, whether you want to sell the stuff or not. But we wanted to get that stuff kinda out there and seeing what could, what we could bring in. The generator is on the list to be sold. We talked to the electrician and he said we could buy a generator that hooks up to our building for the cost that we take to rejigger that and then rejigger a building for them to make it compatible.
That's the surplus one?
This is the surplus, the big area surplus. We did pay three thousand dollars for that.
So you're hoping to get that?
And there was a minimum bid of three thousand dollars. It's a brand-new engine. It's got forty-two or forty-six hours on it.
Seventeen.
Forty-seven hours.
It's one engine.
So the right person, that, that's, that's a steal at that price. It's a monster of an engine. Uh, thirty South Main. So the, the young lady that made her first bid at thirteen thousand, she backed out. So we offered it to the, the next bidder at twelve thousand five. He backed up. Yeah. So, uh, he just called today in fact and let us know. I got in touch with Lauren Hughes, the real estate agent. She's gonna count it. We're gonna be up there tomorrow. We're gonna follow her options up.
Reasons, did they give you a reason why or?
Uh, the, the young man out, uh, this afternoon said he just, him and his partner weren't interested. That was his reason. Uh, the young lady said last week that they had heard their funding was altered.
We'll put it back out there. So we can do it.
Yeah.
Uh, mechanic street, they started...
There's one other thing we could do. We had an original bid for five thousand. I mean, I...
Jay, I think we should try to at least cover our expenses here. I mean, I know...
Let's at least let it meet with...
I say, let's give it a couple more weeks. Let, let him talk to her. She, she would...
And then the only other thing, maybe we should get a price from like Doug. I'm just demo and put it in a box and clean him the lot.
Sell it and sell it.
And then tell him the lot and you'd get him off the lot.
I don't know if you roll or not.
Well, Doug said...
It was twelve, twelve hundred. We buy, we buy the containers. So...
Totally.
More than five container.
Let's...
I was shocked. The Benson store, everybody in the morning...
They took that thing down like that?
All clean up.
Everybody in the morning, it was, there was still a burned-up building there in the afternoon. It's got... It's got...
Let's, let's, uh... Let's give Joe the two weeks. At our next meeting.
Yeah.
See what they come back in with. And then if not, I'd like, I'd like to see something done before winter. I'd like to see it cleaned up and taken care of. I mean, um, if we keep going through and out, we're gonna run into a problem. We're gonna get stuff in there that we don't want in there.
Let's at least know what she thinks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we thought we had it right. It's people committed and then we can't force them though.
Something like that. Do we have to bid out the process of even putting it to a realtor?
You know, I, I've never done that, so I don't know. The, the board has the option to not.
Or are they all the same price? They all take the same commission?
Most all the same commission.
We, we got somebody we know.
Yeah.
You know, I think maybe this, this is one of those situations where...
Find out till we bring back a report next meeting. Then we can make a decision if we're gonna knock it down or not.
Sure.
Oh... Nate, just a quick question though for Sam. When you were talking with the Dougie about taking it down, was there anything we had to strip from that building before they could take it down? He was just gonna take everything out and it'd be gone?
Yeah.
That's the main, cause if you gotta go and start stripping stuff...
Your slave rule.
Your prices go. I mean, we could sell a slave rule. I don't want, how, what it looks like.
Slave seller.
How many factors?
Well, let's go to two weeks and see what we got.
Yeah, at, at this point, I mean, we put it up to bid and we got two decent bids that just backed out, so...
I was hoping that I'd take it.
Yeah, there's not a lot of, I mean, what can you do?
Yeah, you, it's good to, you got going up there. You got tunnel water and sewer there.
Oh, yeah.
And, and you got a lot on top, so, I mean, it's...
I think myself, I think it would look better cleaned up and so, sell it as a building lot.
I think that the second, the second people were thinking they were gonna move in there or they were gonna make it, you know, making it, maybe they were just gonna flip it. But whatever, I think the only flipping that needs to be done is under the...
I say, right, and try to do this in two weeks and we hit the...
Has anybody been in it?
Not a long time.
You been in it recently?
I don't know. I went in two weeks ago and I turned around, walked back outside.
I've been off for a while.
I don't know.
No, they're, they're, no.
The marble floors are on down.
Yeah, the marble floors are on down.
The gold faucets are out in there.
Yeah. Granite County tops are gone.
If it was down, you kept a lot more.
Yeah.
And, you know, even if we can get up on top, if we get, if Sam can get this track so it works good, even if he went up on top, everything on top is all more or less piled in one spot. I mean, it's not like it's all over the place. So, I mean, if he can even knock down right on the edge of it so you don't see the high grass and it looks a little better behind there, you know, I mean... I know he's got a thousand things to do, but I mean...
In your spirit, huh?
You know, but...
I'm working it. I just, I just don't wanna get so much in it, tearing it down that I can never get ahead again. We're already, you know, not, not behind, but trying to recoup.
Imagine you're gonna need at least about three boxes.
Oh, at least.
At least three boxes, maybe four, right? What do we use at the airport?
I'm not sure. I think he said four boxes up there.
Four boxes at the airport?
He thought three down here.
A lot of larger pieces of furniture.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't his first big job, he's not...
Let's, uh...
No, not with that.
Give him the two weeks and then make a decision next week.
I haven't worked on my phone. Never.
Oh...
I didn't hear.
Do you...
The twenty-five mile an hour speed limit signs were put up.
Mm-hmm.
I was reminded that there should be no parking in front of the bank.
That sign hasn't been put up yet.
It has not been put up. No, we talked to Nate. He's gonna, he's gonna get it. That was done.
In front of what bank?
In front of Peoples.
Yeah, we're that in trouble.
Where the eighteen millimeter parking. That's part of the, part of the decision.
That's ridiculous.
Part of the ordinance.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't think we agreed on it.
We, we voted that in and at the same time, the twenty-five mile an hour.
I was more focused on the school than I was on that, but yeah, that needs to be done. I let Nate know today.
We're not enforcing the no parking or two-hour parking over here with schools and stuff?
Yeah.
Cars are there all day, some days.
Probably hit or miss whether you're controlling it. Hard to be everywhere with my phone.
I've noticed that before.
So, so the pop-up park, I don't know if anybody's noticed, the bright colored seating downtown, um, that's in.
Can you shrink that a little bit?
Why? I don't understand, John. Why you're so worried about shrinking it?
Everybody's been hollering about no parking downstairs.
They haven't, that is set up right in where there was no parking before. There are not anywhere else.
I haven't really heard anybody say much about it since Subway's gone. Really?
The only one that complained are people who used to park their cars there twenty-four seven, so that's why.
Um, then we got, we, we got some good reviews. Uh, one store owner was a little upset, but, um...
I went down by today and there were three kids out there with their little backpack. They had their coloring, coloring books on the table. What's wrong with that? I mean, they're, they're not in the street. They're, you know, they're, and they're there for probably, I went up through there a couple different times and they're there. And I think it's great. I, very good. Have breakfast here tomorrow morning.
Nice.
My time, I'll be over.
Eight o'clock. We'll put it on the selectmen's tab.
That's the record show. That's Jay's tab.
That's what I said, Jay's body.
I didn't hear that, but you did.
Jay the Selectman.
Yeah, Joel, bring your, bring the checkbook.
If you bring the checkbook, Jay's not mine.
We figured that out already.
What else you got?
Uh, a little bit, a little bit of paperwork for the grants. Sitting at, when I, on the table sitting in front of you guys, I, I left some, uh, some paperwork that I handed off to the EDC chair, Economic Development Chair. This is, this is for our paperwork so the town can, yeah, so the town can make loans to local businesses. I just wanted to keep everybody in the loop on kind of where we're in the process.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we don't have to fill this out unless we want money.
But this is what the people would...
Unless we want money.
There's more money.
Well, how about records? Well, cover that.
I'll, I'll have your application.
What are you getting, one bean a piece or?
They're gonna fill this out and then it's gonna come back to you. What's your idea on how to report?
Maybe it doesn't have the full, whole, whole board approval.
So the way I envision this working is, and it's obviously the board can make changes if they decide how they want. I envision this to go to the EDC, the, that, the, the applicants. And then they would make a recommendation to the board selecting, and the board selecting would then stamp it as yes or no. And then the paperwork side of processing and managing that would then be shutted off to me and Jenny, or me, whoever's gonna do it.
Just make sure that all the processes follow in that scenario.
Yeah, and I think the most important thing is to make sure everybody's aware that the possibility of having that money, so, so, so people can apply.
Yes.
So they don't find out in the Rotten Herald when we award money to somebody and we don't have anymore.
Declare about it all.
Yeah, for breakfast.
That was the other part, question I had there. That, it was twenty-five thousand, right?
The loan.
I mean, or what we had the totals to give out, the week, this, they could apply for.
It's, no, it's, they gave us twenty-nine, we asked for thirty, and the towns gave like seven thousand dollars match. So almost, almost forty thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand.
But that can be split amongst more than one person.
Yeah.
I mean, one person don't get it all.
No, no, could. They could.
They could, but I mean, but if you had three applicants and they're all properly qualified, you know, you could split it up that way, correct?
For pieces of equipment or what?
You can split it up. You can give it to them, one that needed it most, or if there's five of them.
Yeah. And I figure it's a good thing that, the Towne Fairhaven, and I'm gonna get on my high horse here, we kinda get looked, looked over. Like, Rotten is not coming to help us. The state's...
They never did.
So there's no reason we shouldn't help ourselves, and this is what I see. Fairhaven's helping Fairhaven.
This is for, all right, go back. It's a business. It's for a business. It's not for apartments.
Right. What do you mean?
This is for like a business itself, like a, you know, like, a lot of like the brewery, for instance.
You're saying if somebody wants to just renovate apartments, it's not necessarily for that. It's more for getting an industry there.
I would want them to fill out the loan application like anyone else. I wouldn't, I wouldn't start out a hand and try to say it has to be this type or that type.
Is this only for downtown or for the whole town?
Well, yeah, anybody could...
Any place in town.
Anybo, any, it's downtown though, right?
No, any, any place in town.
Anybody that lives in Fairhaven or owns a business in Fairhaven.
But this is good discussion for our Economic Development Committee, 'cause it helps us as we're doing the administration of the thing to know what you're thinking.
Yeah, my, anybody has a business. My two cents is that anybody could apply apartments too, but I, I would be prejudiced...
You may come back with, and, and look at it and, at, at the last step and say, okay, if we got this, it's apartments or it's a, a retail business, like a professional office going in or whatever, which one?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if, I wouldn't, I'd like somebody to come in and wide, eyes wide open, because if, if somebody comes in here and wants money to put an apartment on the ground floor of the downtown, I'm not gonna be in favor of that. You know, so, but I mean, I, they have every right to ask, just, just that.
If a person was coming in, that was a, it was like a teaching school, but it was a business, they'd be able to apply?
Sure, of course. Claire said yes.
Yeah, that's all I need. If Claire said yes, that's all I need.
Well, I'm just thinking, if I wanna start a business being a tailor, dressmaker, and I want my sewing machine, why should I apply? I'm gonna work out of my house, but it's a business.
That's right, yeah, that's very true. I mean, right.
I know, I want that studio. I can do it.
Well, what I like is I can get ten people, like you, started in that.
Right, getting something small, yeah. I mean, a small independent or whatever we can do.
But I just wanna make sure that it's equal opportunity, that everybody has...
Everything come, would come through you.
If Sam wants to, I, he can.
It comes through the Economic Development.
I don't live in Fairhaven.
You know, everything goes to Economic Development, to Administration, Collective Board. We don't make any decisions. Once it's there, we make a recommendation to this, to this board, and this board makes the final decision.
It's not just this board that's...
That's...
That's how you guys want it to be.
That's what it sounded like.
Yeah, at some point in time, it's gotta come back here with elected guys.
I would think so, but...
Yeah, they're responsible for money.
Yeah, and it's easier to find us, to yell at us.
The other thing I don't, I didn't quite understand was, you get a pot of money for this year. Do I reapply and get another pot of money for next year, or do I try to hold that principle? Like, do I just give five thousand dollars out this year and for the next six years, so that I have money while people are paying their loans back?
Yeah, as opposed to just using everything all at once and hopefully people pay back.
Right, 'cause you got a way better chance of people actually using it, if, if it's been around a few years and people know about it, even if it was only five thousand bucks a year.
Yep.
'Cause I'm assuming they're paying it back four, five, six years.
Is this a renewable thing every year?
The, the money stays with the town. Uh, we have, in fact, I just talked to them about this, uh, while I left the message. Our, our grant is supposed to be twelve months, but like I told them, it's like we might not even be able to get one loan in twelve months, but we can, we can renew our grant for three years.
Okay, that would...
As soon as the money rolls though, as soon as we make a loan and that money comes back, it then stays with the town. There's no more grant to worry about.
Then you could, then you could still use that money to loan out for the same thing.
That's the seed money that gets you the money.
But if you only loan out five thousand of it, you only have five thousand.
After, yeah, after three years, if you don't commit the money, then it's used or lose it. But I'd have to still get clarification. That's the way I...
I think we could get rid of it.
And right now, it's at, the, the interest rate is at like five percent, which is, which is the standard.
Interest rate cutoff time for, for this year. Could apply for that? For any given time?
No, I think it's just first come, first served. If you're interested, come and apply. But we still don't make that paperwork finish yet.
So this is different than what we talked about with, uh...
Brewery. That was a grant versus a, versus a loan fund, right?
Yeah, the brewery grant, we just had some paperwork and we gave it to the state. In this case...
This is our...
The federal government gave us money to loan it.
To do this. Okay, that's my question, okay.
Yeah, no, it's, we did them at the same time, so they get confused.
Yeah, there is a separation.
Yes. Um, Mission Church, uh, these folks, they approached us and they said, we would like to use your upstairs, uh, to hold church. I, I ran this past, um, legal, not because it's a church, but because there is not ADA compliant, and yeah, we're, we're on the hook for ADA compliant, whether it was rented or not, so they just shut that right now.
You seem like a nice guy though, I mean...
What about the other end of it, the, um, um, government loan or renting to a, a religious organization? Is that okay?
They didn't seem to be, it wasn't a problem for, for Bill, no. Which you could see somebody come and saying there's no separation of church and state, right, but, um, they're, they would be paying us for a service. They're just using a space. It's not like we're supporting any individual. They're, they're paying us for use of location, so it's...
We gotta split fifty-fifty for the other people.
If we do this project.
Yes. I, I was hoping to get them in before that, but I can't do that. Um, but yeah, there is, there is a desire to use the space, not only from them, but I mean, the, the door will come in, you can, you can pay rent. But on that note, so the Mission Church are the, those are the folks that do the free movie in the park, and they're gonna do it again this year, not this Friday, but next Friday. Um, the good news is Mr. Scott Foles, he started a campaign to raise money so we could buy our own movie projector, um, and he raised that money. Uh, so we're gonna move forward. We're looking into buying the projector system and the screen and the sound system for that. So next summer, we'll be able to put out our own movie in the park.
Nice.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a great thing.
You scare me all of a sudden there.
He's pretty dedicated to this town.
He worked hard. He, he went, he, he beat the bushes and, yeah, I'm very proud of him. Uh, Friday is our wine and cheese tasting. Um, we're also gonna have, um, chocolate, onion, fudge. Yeah, and again, Cabot donated a whole bunch of cheese for us, so we thank Cabot for that. I'm almost done, I promise. Water Department wanted me to let you guys know that their second meter reader is failing, so this was, it was fortuitous that we started to, uh, replace those meters now. Uh, that had to go in and do another fifty manual entries from the old system. It's, the system's old and it's breaking down.
It's time for it to...
We're gaining on the replacements.
Yep. There will be ads in the, uh, water bill when it comes out.
To call, make an appointment?
Yeah, to call, make an appointment. Um, the titles.
It took, it took, uh, Tom longer to put the meter in, or Rod, Rod, Mr. Ladue longer to get the outside remote off the house than it did for Tom to put the meter in.
At your house?
Yeah.
You said you were gonna do that.
What, Tom told me if I did it, it might not work right. I'd have it in backwards and upside down.
So, um, the guys are gaining ground, and Tom is out there. He's still banging on doors, actually making appointments with people, so that's...
Do we know how far in sell we are percentage wise? Number wise?
Two meetings ago I did that.
It was fourteen percent, uh, two, two meetings ago here. I was hoping it'd be close to twenty percent by now, if you're gonna make it.
Sure.
I got, I got one question. A lot of our places take a larger meter than what we're putting in the home, so we have a meter for that, true?
Yeah, so they rejiggered their budget, 'cause they had a few extra smaller meters that they purchased previously, so they're gonna have some money to buy the bigger meters, so they should be okay then. Uh, and to let the board, uh, give you guys a heads up, September eleventh, which is a Wednesday after our next meeting, I'm sorry. Two meetings from today, September eleventh to the eighteenth, I've gotta take some time off, and I'll be on vacation for this.
You gotta be here for the meeting.
I'll be here for the meeting.
Me, but me, but on September eleventh, it's good.
Yeah, but other than that, I'm fine.
It's good.
Good.
And that's, and, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. Sorry, at the last, uh, the chief was, uh, the, the board gave the chief thirteen thousand to, uh, buy a cruiser. We talked about that at the last meeting. We were looking for that number. I think he came in at eleven-five. Eleven-two.
Eleven-two.
Okay. Sorry, that was a...
All right.
That's it.
You sure?
Yeah.
We're still on...
Sorry, I missed that. Could you say it again, please?
No, I won't.
Well, if you want me to.
Don't start it. It has the line of its own. Uh, okay, salt shed replacement location.
Yeah, so there's the map again. I was asked.
You got your fingers on the salt shed?
Is that where the salt shed is?
I think, yeah, I think, salt shed.
Yeah, that's where I think we're in. That way you drive straight in, you can back, put everything in here and right there, yeah. And you can drive through, you can drive through barn if you wanted to.
Yeah, I went and drew one up.
Did you?
Well, I just, just put in salt shed in the, in the barn and say, at least you got something to talk about.
Yeah.
What's everybody else saying?
And I stole it from Jay, actually.
That's the best thing. Jay says you can drive it.
Straight shot, right here or right here?
Just the salt shed.
Yeah, salt shed, yes, you're right.
He's got a twelve-day garage there.
You could do a, what you could do a double, you'd, a drive-through garage.
Yeah, that's, that's the, the garage that Doug prices as a drive-through.
Yeah, because it's the only way to go. I mean, 'cause that way you can move around it.
So you, you okay with that?
Sure.
Right there at the end?
By where the garden is, is here?
Yeah.
Is anybody using the garden?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, we just, uh...
Just checking, making sure, see what kind of place they have.
Well, that could be...
We can find them another spot.
We can find them another spot.
On this salt shed. We're looking at one big enough that we can run a barrier going through the centers when we put salt and sand in there, correct?
Yeah. How big was that sucker?
Way bigger than what we needed.
It's way bigger than what we need.
Well, that's good.
Now, is this for me?
Yeah, we, we can put salt on one side and sand on the other.
Yeah, 'cause I just, if you're gonna pull one up, let's do it so we can keep everything undercover.
Yeah. So you'll be able to get a year of salt and sand?
See, that's...
Right now, what do we get a month?
That's a saving on your nap. We get pretty low.
We only get two weeks, if we're lucky.
I think the best thing to get in it, Bill, is pretty low, right?
Yeah, it's great.
But you can also, the nice part about this is you're gonna be able to go out and gonna say, look, I need so many ton of salt. Give me a price and I'll, I'll deliver it this year.
Well, and you can reach out to other people, like Mo's or out of Canada or whatever, I mean...
You got more of a chance to get a better price for salt by being able to get it all delivered in summertime.
Yeah.
Now, for, I mean, right now, we go through the state, man.
Yeah.
Whatever the state gets it for, we get it for, but...
Yep.
Well, it doesn't hurt to firm it out.
If you had a price on it, yeah, so...
Might be able to beat them.
You won't give a price on salt until...
No, no.
All right.
All right, that's where we're going.
What are you doing without, you're not doing anything?
Is there gonna be a...
Uh, well, if you guys give me a motion on it, I would like to have a motion on it.
Resident two hundred thousand dollars.
A hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, six hundred, yes.
More than produce a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for salt.
That's that shed. You just have to stop your trucks from getting old.
I'm sorry. The match was thirty thousand dollars that we're applying to the EDC for. I talked to them last year. They said if they would have known the state was funding us, they would fund us. So I'm, we're applying again. We're asking for the thousand dollars again.
You get that, Lars?
So you think we might get a salt shed for...
I'll suck it.
That's what, did you get, John? Okay, do it again, John.
Motion to approve, what was the dollar figure?
You don't need the dollar figure, any location.
Salt, sand shed at the airport.
Just the location?
At, uh, where the garden was previously, Martha's a hanger.
Second?
Second.
Everybody understand where the salt shed's going?
At the garden location.
Garden location.
Are we gonna proceed with that this year, or is it gonna be next year or something?
It's not gonna happen this year. There will be no construction this year.
We're, we're talking...
It wouldn't have happened. The state's not involved. They're not ready for it.
Are they telling us what we have to put up? So we could do one of the ones we talked about before with the cement sides and then put the tile?
Yeah, that's what the grant was for, was a, was a fabric dome and the jersey barriers.
Because I think that's the cheapest way for us to go.
Yeah, and Mendon, I've seen one in Mendon. It's, it, it's perfect.
And they can just, you know, you get the one on the, on the back side, so nothing can come into it. Good, okay.
I think they even make a, a front side for that, for the middle.
And they put a door.
They put a big wall up, like a twenty-foot door so you can still dump.
Sixteen, sixteen door or something like that.
Trailer in there and everything all, but it's sealed up, no birds that way. Anyway, whatever.
Yes, we did.
It was unanimous with us, with us. New truck for the water department.
The board selection approved thirty thousand dollars going into, I think, I think it's actually labeled new truck. Um, for the water department. In your packet, there are a few quotes.
Train moving.
I think the van is not a bad piece of equipment, I would like to keep the van. It's, it's been inspected, we just has the brakes done on it, it's got a little bit of rust, but.
You need another air on it?
Of the quotes that I'm looking at that were in our packet, are you recommending any particular quote?
I'm, myself, I would go with the extended cab, half-ton extended cab. It's a little cheaper, but.
Chevy, the fifteen-hundred?
Yeah.
I got one question.
I mean, I think, I don't, I don't really think that they need three-quarter ton. They're not hauling heavy loads. I mean, I mean, just.
Where it says fleet, is that the price we can buy it for, is twenty-seven-five-ninety-seven?
Yeah.
I thought they wanted a, I thought they wanted a utility body.
Yeah.
I did too, that's what I'm confused.
They did, but you can't pull one on a half-ton pickup.
Right, but you priced it three-quarter.
Three-quarter ton, they can pull one on.
Wouldn't it be cheaper?
You're talking a lot more money.
Wouldn't it be cheaper to put that type of box on there, that's try to build racks and everything else and something that's gotta just, uh?
Well.
Cover on it?
You can, you can buy one, you can buy a cab from Lucky's. That will fit on there, it's got the toolboxes on the side, the big doors on the, you take your tailgate off.
Yeah, I mean, what are they?
For three thou, uh, was that thirty-four, thirty-four?
Did you get that one?
Thirty-four, so would have like thirty, would have about thirty-one hundred dollars in that truck with that type of a box, a top on it. Would the, would the half-ton take care of all that? I mean, would we have, would we have to put helpers or anything like that on and make sure?
What do they carry, Jeff, just to shut off?
Would you, would you take that truck, for us to get it oil undercoated too?
Uh, you can't.
Let's get the oil we got to do here first.
Huh? You can't. You can't undercoat a new rig, it's more, it value, it lowers the warranty.
No, we gotta do the wax thing.
Yeah, the wax, the wax one.
Do the wax.
And they went to that on new ones.
It all comes through all undercoated anyways.
Which is what this is. You ready? But anyway, I. So what's the difference in price then, between a three-quarter ton with a utility body on it, with the doors on the outside?
And I didn't even price that, cause the guy told me that was gonna be a lot more money, so I, I knew Tom only had thirty thousand to, to deal with and.
I'm just worried that they gotta get in the back of that truck every time.
No, no, the door's on the side, with his cap, your door's on the side also, you open up. You can open up and reach in and take something out of the truck.
Yeah, but can you actually reach in?
Yeah. And everything is right, you just open up the door, Jeff, and everything's right there, right on shelves.
So what's the inside look like?
The inside's open.
It's open.
So if you have something, you can slide it in between the, the boxes.
Does that come with a tough-toe inside box?
I believe it is.
So is that the one, is that the one?
Do.
That's, yeah, that's the one I, I would go with.
Water guys happy with that?
So this is?
I guess is my question.
No, cause.
I mean, everyone's using it every day.
The extended cab is nineteen feet, and that's tight to put in the barn. Uh, the three-quarter ton, I think, is eighteen feet, so that will fit in the barn for them. So.
Do they need an extended cab?
Why would they need an extended cab?
That's what he's going for.
It's a double cab.
He wants the extended. I want, I want the extended cab.
But this quote is for a single cab, isn't it?
The three-quarter ton. Three-quarter ton is, is for a single cab.
All different ones.
Eight-foot box.
You're doing good.
But that runs his, that runs his budget right to the, that thirty thousand is, and then you'd have to come up with another thirty-four hundred dollars for a cab.
So the one that you're recommending?
It's the twenty-seven-five-ninety-seven?
Yeah, the Silverado, the Silverado fifteen-hundred four-wheel drive double cab.
Double cab.
With the one forty-seven.
With the cap, then you're gonna add the cap to it, right?
Yep. Then he'll have enough money for the cab to, it won't be over, won't be over budget.
Did we ask them if that one, or did?
Where is the twenty-seven-hundred dollars, or twenty-seven thousand?
Right here, it's, uh, in the ones that are hooked together.
The ones, the three that are hooked together.
The second one in. The two thousand twenty.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
In that, now what's in that cab is about, that you're gonna send the back is about three grand on top of the twenty-seven-five-ninety-seven?
Yeah.
Okay, so he's using around his budget, thirty thousand that we put in for his budget, so it's there.
This is.
Money's there.
Which was that money that allocated for this?
And, and Tom is seeing this from right here and he's. The folks are gonna be using it, are saying, yeah, that's gonna take care of what we need.
Well, they're, the only reason they're saying no is because of the length. That's the only reason they're saying no. Is they want it, they wanna put it in their garage.
Which makes sense.
Which, it's tight.
Why doesn't it make sense to the inside?
They wanna put it, okay, so the, the reason that we're, the recommendation is the one that's, the extended cab, wonder, number one is because it's cheaper than having special orders just a regular crew cab. The second reason is, I think the extended cab will come in handy regardless of what you said today down the road, we're gonna wish we would have locked out.
Well, you take the seat there and put stuff in there.
It, it might not fit in that water department, but inside that, if you've ever been inside the water facility, it's extremely damp. Uh, we just had a furnace rust right through, if we park a pickup truck in there with a little bit of salt on it, that thing is gonna rust right through to the bone. I, I couldn't see parking that thing inside and.
Well, if you got a cap on it, it's not a big deal.
I'm, I'm worried about the fenders and the under.
No, no, I'm saying.
Park it outside.
The parking outside, if you got a cap, everything's gonna be covered.
You just have to un- unice the window.
In this. So then, and these new trucks got, got an attic starter, so you start it and let it thaw up.
And I asked someone what his recommendation is. But we understood what the water department wanted, both, we wanted what Sam wanted too.
I'm surprised that they didn't come tonight.
You're talking about that cap for thirty-four hundred dollars, right?
Yeah.
But on here it says it's for a Chevy twenty-five-hundred regular cab. Does that make a difference?
It, actually, that, the one I priced, cause I, we were talking about the three-quarter, and that's the one I priced out, is for the three-quarter. So, and I think it will go down, Jay, because it, the regular extended cab's on the six foot, so it will go down in price.
So how much is the truck?
Twenty-seven-five-ninety-seven plus, uh, three thousand four hundred.
Wow. Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, that would be.
There's your, there's your truck.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm thinking.
It's thirty thousand nine ninety-five.
If it's.
Put a truck in that cap.
And it could, it could be cheaper.
Just a base mount structure, fancy.
I'll make a motion to purchase the, new truck for the water department, not just say thirty thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars.
Back to windows, back to locks.
Ninety-seven dollars.
I mean, truck, uh.
Did you get that, Lars?
No.
Is there a second?
I didn't get it.
Yeah, I'll second it.
What was it? I just wanted.
That's right.
Double cab for twenty.
Yeah, and that would have made a motion for thirty-one thousand, but that's what I said.
Did you see how cheap those Silverados are, twenty-five-hundred, like what, thirty-four thousand or something?
Trust me. Trust me, you're getting a, you're getting a discount for a town.
Yeah, unbelievable.
Yeah, well, I just went on the price thing.
They were more?
Yeah. A half-ton is a fifty-nine thousand dollar truck.
It's amazing.
Right.
Everybody understand what we're doing?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Water department's not able to do this stuff.
I make it clear, they did, they did request the not extended cab. We're, we're overruling that, we, Sam and I thought this would be, yes.
No, you know what, sometimes good.
I didn't hear it from them, I heard it from him.
You, you're hearing it from me.
Just making sure that.
If there's a complaint, this was a, a decision from upper management.
And they had no other reason except it didn't fit in their garage.
And if the weather's.
They could put in it or.
I, and I think if they do a little bit adjustment, they could fit it in.
Into the Chevy.
You don't think it should be in there?
I don't think it should be in there, that is an extremely damp location, we just had it, the furnace rust out on us. This year it happened.
No, and that was supposed to be a stainless steel furnace, but it didn't get that one.
It, it fixed, I'm just saying.
Everybody okay, all those in favor?
No.
Hi.
All those opposed? Unanimous.
This must be a V eight, right?
Yeah, so it's the five-three.
Five-three. That's a good mower.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Okay.
And you demonstrated that.
They want you to decide, just park it outdoors, all they gotta do is start it and it'll warm up anyway.
Start to get shaky, everything on the agenda is purchased.
We got new mower.
It's okay, Bob.
Yeah, no, no, it isn't.
It's okay.
Makes me energy. Okay, next one is mower purchase?
I have a, I have a quick question about now with the van. Is the van something that you could use at the garage?
Joe's got some plan.
It's gonna be, it's gonna say town manager on the side, in, in bright rainbow letters.
I, I had no use for it.
You're gonna be living down by the river in a van?
Let's just not let it sit around and rot into the ground.
It's not, so right now, the, if the water department's doing, if they're reading meters currently, we got one guy that'll use his own truck with two pieces of equipment, they can go, they can work independently.
Town vehicle.
It's not just gonna be parked for a lot of time.
Let's, if we're gonna do this, let's look at maybe what little bit of rust is on that truck, let's get it fixed so we don't lose it. That's after the other one gets here, so they've got something to drive.
Mower purchase.
It should say tractor.
Now, what's this mower purchase?
It's the tractor.
Tractor.
That's the tractor, oh.
Roadside mower.
Where are we with money from the junk prices?
Uh, junk, you're at four thousand one hundred and ninety. That's just scrap metal taken out of the yard.
We didn't hear nothing about the pickup. You were saying something about the guy looked at the pickup and the generator?
Well, we had it, no, we had the, the guy looked at the Sommy and the generator.
Oh, that's what it was, the Sommy.
We, we decided to put it out to bits, so.
We didn't turn anybody down, but we thought everybody should get the opportunity.
What are you, what do you think you're gonna get out of those two pieces of equipment?
The generator and the Som.
You have a minimum of three grand on the generator.
Yeah, there's three K on the generator, whether we get it or not, I don't know. Honestly, I don't know, a few thousand dollars out of all of it, maybe five?
Yeah, well, actually, I mean, can I say what he did?
No.
Okay, cause he's.
Could look.
That, no.
So what, what I'm saying, if this goes, if this sells, we're gonna have enough money in the budget from what we sold for junk to buy a tractor.
That was our goal, was to, was to bring in enough, instead of taking it out of the reserves, to kind of pay for itself on its own.
Okay, so if it works out with this tractor, it's very gonna want his money, I mean. So what's the deal with the balance of the money right now? Is there money somewhere that we can use until this other stuff is sold? So then go back into general fund, or back into our fund?
Can we take it out of the reserve and then when this sells, replace the money, I think it's.
That's, that's exactly what it's.
So what, ninety-five, right? So we're looking at fifty-five to come out of the reserve right now.
Well, it would all come out of reserve, and then we'll just pay ourselves back.
Okay, but the four is already put in the reserve, right?
Yes. But you have to take the total out.
So you're gonna take ninety-five out of the reserve and put ninety-five, the goal's put ninety-five back, when we've got four thousand seven hundred, we can put back. Right after, and the balance when it sells.
Did we ever sell the Dodge Pick 'em?
That's sitting out there just saying.
I'll make the motion, I mean, do ninety-five hundred dollars, not to exceed ninety-five hundred dollars, to purchase the tractor.
Out of the reserve. Out of the reserve.
Out of the reserve, huh? Second, with, with the stipulation that it goes back in as the stuff is sold. Still second.
Questions?
I haven't been down and actually put my hands on that tractor.
Well, I walked around it.
But I'm a little nervous this is gonna be a money pit.
But there was nothing leaking, there was nothing that was, there was no wet spots, there was nothing on the ground from it. As Sam Michael discussed one time, there's, there's, the tires a little weather check, but you know, we can get through, it's not, I don't feel they're that bad, I don't feel that you're, the tread itself is good. We're getting a four-wheel drive tractor. And that means that we're gonna be able to mow more than just the edge of the road, I mean, you'll be able to go off a little bit, maybe mow back, maybe make two swaths on some of these roads.
Yep, I have no.
Which will help with the brush problem.
Yep, I have no doubt on that, I just.
Well, and.
Everybody should be aware that.
Okay, and, and the other thing too, this is my.
Repairs on these things are not.
This is my feeling, is that if we decide later on to buy the other mower, the other type of mower, and you feel that we need another track, we got something we can trade. And I feel we're gonna, I, I really feel we'll get our money back out of trading it in.
Think so?
I, I think we will. I haven't bought a tractor in a long time, but I know what equipment I had.
There just aren't a lot of them around, I see it dwn just Saturday, Saturday in New York.
Wait till you buy it, then you'll see a million.
I mean, I know, I know what you're talking, how it's.
I know I shoot you down by new stuff all the time, but I, there is.
I know, but that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to do is.
You need him.
Yeah, balance this out, where I can use it, maybe get a couple years out of it, then.
There is, and there is a bucket on it.
It's got a loader?
Got a loader on it, so that's also another plus, I think. I mean, it can be used anywhere, I mean, it's, it's a pretty solid, pretty heavy loader bucket, so.
High enough to load a truck?
Yes, it is, yeah, I mean, it's, the tractor itself is high.
And that, and might, there's a guy out of Canada that works on those and got parts, and he says he's reasonable, so.
Other questions?
I mean, it's one of those things.
All those in favor?
I like mine.
Those opposed?
I don't think she heard your hand.
I will pose. Be back with Sommy again.
I'm doing all one thing.
Okay.
The color green and the color orange.
I have a work ethic, I.
New business.
I'm not spending a new color.
Hazard mitigation plan.
I, I mean, I, I got enough mechanical.
Does the AC work in it?
No, I gotta recharge it. But I, I got enough mechanical ability to do it myself, I don't, I'm not gonna have to send it out.
Hundred bucks an hour all the time. Hundred bucks an hour all the time.
And if we get in a jam, we've got, listen, if we get in a jam, we got a farmer on the board that would probably go down and help to put it back.
Yeah.
He's, he's got, he's got all the wire and the tin snips that you need.
And wire and tin snip.
Hammer.
We put plywood on things now.
Are we gonna have to take the plywood jack off the Sammies and get rid of it?
I'll try again.
Get the front of it.
Are we done?
Yes, we're done.
Are we done?
We're done.
Thank you. Hazard mitigation.
Yeah, there you go.
Forgot about that. Hazard mitigation adoption, plan adoption.
So we, yeah, we handed this off to the board for comments and the planning commission. We received no comments in the public and we received no comments. This was done for free by the Brooklyn Regional Planning Commission.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Uh.
Question?
Some, some discussion, I, I'm getting the second, I just wanna get the discussion, but the only, there was just a comment about one of the things, I know where, we've looked at it, we've seen it before. Looked at the one where it's, one of the areas where we, we need in, it was on page twelve, where we need improvement and, and, and the risk was around the maintenance programs to reduce risk around robust cleaning out stormwater collection system. My concern, just so that we get it on the record here, is our storm drains and the amount of sand and silt and everything that we've got in there, we get a major event like an Irene event. And if those storm drains were, got, haven't been cleaned out, places that never flooded could get flooded by water not being able to get down through those, so. Just, I'm, I'm all for passing the plan. I didn't see a robust action that says we're gonna go and mitigate the problem with the storm drains. It says we're gonna, what I, what I read was more, we're gonna look at it for two or three years and we gotta get out and do some cleaning.
Yeah, we gotta do some cleaning.
And as long as, as long as we have that, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Even several Lenz going.
There you go.
I know what that feels like, though.
And the other area in here was, it sounds like the rescue squad portion of, of being one of the places, depending on how we end up, whether this needs to be modified for the current state. But other than that, that's.
Can I just per shit some? What did this study cost us?
Nothing.
Nothing? Well, you mean we got something for free for one?
Well, there's a dollar day, it's just something.
I guess, the only thing I had to say about any of it was some of the pictures they took, it was because of Irene.
I think that was the goal.
You know, I mean, that's, like where it shows the town burn down underwater, that was, that's only happened, hasn't happened very often.
One time ever, right?
I think it's the only time I remember.
No, I, I grew up down there.
You've seen it?
Oh, yeah.
It's not as bad as it used to be.
Behind, behind the Dodge place.
Oh, yeah.
It was flooded all the way up to there. So we used to play in that, in the water.
Just this, just this spring that, that was pretty close.
Pauline and George, they can't flood it a couple of times, though.
I, I feel good, though, that with the talk, with the salt shed and moving, that we're mitigating all of that, so that's, that's good.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Just what you just said about moving the salt shed and possibly a town burn, you eliminate a lot of problems down there too, if you put a trench or a ditch down through where it is right now. Just in case you did get high water, so the flooding, you'd have a ditch that it could, it could run off, you know, instead of being, that's down the road.
Not that far. Okay, town hall repair, fire.
Are we gonna meet a large condition number two by the deadline date?
Yes. We've already met almost all of the grant conditions. We missed for the grant screen.
What's, on the hallway up here, what's the reason for raising the ceiling?
Out here?
Yeah.
He said it was for aesthetics.
For what?
Aesthetics, it opens the, it will open the hallway up and make it more pleasing.
You know, it passes more heat.
Yeah.
Your heat's going upstairs anyway.
It's so he can have a grand concourse, you know.
Oh, well.
Well, that was one of the quite, I mean, when I saw it, I'm going, what the hell?
Well, I mean, they're trying to, that's the goal of the study, right? Make it look.
Is it your.
Gotta be done.
No, you guys can, the board can decide to do what you want to do.
I believe with the bathrooms, I think the bathroom should be done.
Yeah.
I think that's something that should be done. And the elevator, I mean, we can't do nothing unless the elevator's up.
Do you have costs on each one of these things?
I, I did get quotes, I don't have a, that's how we decided.
Of course, the heating system.
The, that's.
Heating system is, that should be one.
Yeah.
Elevator, bathroom should be two.
I didn't think of the bathroom.
You know, it says for the handicap bathrooms away in the.
Isn't an elevator, bathroom, heat, and then sprinklers should be in there somewhere?
Well, sprinkler will have to be, once they start upstairs, they have to have the sprinkler, right?
Have to have it, right, so.
So that'd be almost a plus. That'd be one of the four.
Be right there.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be a plus anywhere for the whole building.
It, would it be, would it be possible, would it be possible to, if everybody's in agreement, we're talking heating, bathroom, elevator, sprinkler, see where that gets us? Because we're starting to get pretty close to.
I would think that'd be.
Couple hundred grand.
Potentially bathrooms on the upstairs.
But I mean, but we can't, we can worry about that after we get the sprinkler, like you just said, we have to have the sprinkler system for anything, and we have to have the elevator for.
Heat, sorry, heat.
Heat is number one, I think. Heat's number one.
Brand new plant.
Definitely, because of what we got.
We, we have to, we have to be able to gain access, or they're not gonna give us the money. So it has to be heat and elevator.
Elevators has to come pretty close.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, you know what I mean? So we could say we're just gonna compete, they're not gonna give us the money, right?
Well, give them all four of them.
Yeah.
We'll price it out and see what it looks like.
No, we're thinking with your six hundred, you're gonna be able to do like three to four things.
If I had six hundred, we could do all of this. I only have two hundred plus a hundred that I'm gonna get from them later. That's why we have to prioritize.
Okay, well then.
Heat and elevator.
Heat and elevator and then.
Well, so, we know we need to know what the dollars are to.
Well, if you prioritize what you want, I will get the number.
Okay.
Okay, so you have known numbers for a heating system or anything like that now?
It's about a hundred thousand dollars.
For the heating system? Okay, so that's gonna give us two hundred thousand more.
The elevator?
The elevator's gonna cost.
I'm pretty confident you're gonna get that hundred thousand. You're confident you're gonna get that hundred thousand, or?
You seem pretty confident.
What's the elevator gonna cost?
Uh, the elevator, depending on what we go with, we can get it from anywhere between seventy to a hundred twenty.
Let's do one point. Or a hundred, call it a hundred, so you got another hundred.
Still got a hundred.
Heat elevator, but don't we need sprinklers in order before we can even think about?
How much is the sprinkler?
We, we would have to sprinkle the stall and then they want us to sprinkle the fire department, because it's below the gathering space. Uh, that's in a some, it's gonna be about a hundred thousand.
Yeah, cuz you want, you wanna sprinkle the fire department.
That doesn't do a bathroom.
That doesn't do a bathroom.
You wanna do the.
How much for the bathrooms?
I didn't get, he tossed those bathrooms in here, I had one.
It was like twenty?
Well, I would put the bathrooms off if we have to do the other ones first. Let that be the end of it then.
What's our, um.
But you have to have the sprinkler system in the fire department, so that way during the truck out, the place is burning.
Makes sense.
So they're gonna back out, put fire out.
Well, what does, we have.
To get to the cell phone.
What's that leave in our account? Zero?
Zero, the dead note, so. But we also have fifty hopefully coming from USDA in the next month or so. They seem pretty confident that they wanna help us, um, and.
You remarked the bathrooms for that.
So why don't you do heat, elevator, sprinkler, and bathrooms number four?
Right.
I like that.
Heat, elevator, bath.
Heat, elevator, sprinkler, bathroom, yeah.
I'll tell you what you need.
And what am I missing?
A lot of money.
No, no, but the heat pumps.
You're missing a grid for me.
Just refurbishing the stairs, what? I don't know, that, and some insulation. How's this possibly work?
How would you do, how would you put insulation other than in your ceiling upstairs?
Ceiling upstairs.
Because you can't do nothing with the walls cuz you're brick, unless you drill inside here, then I don't know how you'd even do that.
It just said insulated over the multipurpose room.
Upstairs, that's the one upstairs, the gymnasium.
Heat pumps, lighting, these are the things that we didn't talk about, yeah. Refinish, refurbish the finishes in the multipurpose room and the stairs. And ADA on all the bathrooms.
We can, yeah, but if we can get the elevator and the heat in, then you can go for other stuff. I mean, once, once you get a start.
Why would you put a heat pump in?
I should, uh, see.
Heat pump would be cheaper upstairs.
Yeah, the place, the heat pumps upstairs would be easier to have a re-figure, all the piping.
I thought there was heat upstairs, there was one.
On the far end, there's one baseboard, there's baseboard heat on the far end, and the big room used to be forced air.
So a heat pump will take care of it.
Will take care of it.
Would that.
Air conditioning in.
Combination.
So the quote you got for the heating system was upgrading, not replacing?
It was, no, it was replacing the system, the downstream boiler system.
Cuz it says upgrade here, that's.
No, no, that was to replace.
Okay, that will replace the part of the system that we have.
Yeah, that would be to pipe it right into this.
It's just the boiler.
Pretty.
Okay, so now, so now my next.
So every morning you'll have to shovel coal and.
Coal and pellets.
Now, my next question is oil tank.
Oh, yeah.
That can be part, part of it, or?
That's, that's separate from this front.
That's separate, okay.
Yeah, that's. We're centered. But yeah, that's gonna be along with you to say.
Separate.
Yeah, separate from this.
We don't, we're able to spring the full oil now.
Yeah.
Any grant money associated with that?
I tried, there's nothing. If you're, if you're a homeowner, you can get grants for this. If you're a business or a municipality, they'll loan you, no interest, but they'll loan you.
And we're putting the tank back in the same spot or a different spot?
Let's see, put her where it is.
I know.
I would take it, where else you gonna put it?
Uh, I didn't have an idea.
You know, the place you can put us in the parking lot where Bill practices cars.
You can just poke a hole and it's gonna film the same, right? That is a.
What's that?
Isn't that a legit way to get rid of it?
No, it's gotta just cement some out.
Oh, you gotta cement up?
So we had to do a lot of the, the old garage there.
I thought you could film the sand.
What, the tanks that are there?
Yeah.
They, they take them right out. They take them out, cut a hole in the end of them, send them down the road.
So just, just a question, if we did the heating, elevator, sprinklers, is the upstairs current wiring, lights good enough to go that we don't have to repla, I mean, again, doesn't this, it may not look pretty, but are we talking we have to rewire, new lighting, all, all of the above? I just, I.
Surprisingly, the lights work up there.
And, and that's what I said when we went up for the tour.
If I had the.
Lights work, no good.
If we had the money, which as part of the six hundred thousand, we were gonna do some lighting work, some refurbishment.
But we wouldn't need, we'd be able to, if we pull this off, we'd be able to actually use the upstairs.
Can we apply, can?
I can. I intend to apply again, yeah. I don't know if they'll give us anything, but it's always free to ask.
Is the wiring upstairs up to code? You don't have a business in there, it's gotta be up to code.
Code?
Yeah.
There wasn't any call back, um.
Put a business in there, you're gonna have to.
Great grandfather. Do I think I suggested, keep it in the back of your mind, so we put the tank on, we're doing our budget.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so you need this?
Yes.
We got the priority.
All right, so we have the priorities. We have a grant agreement resolution. We are the single grantee. Uh, whereas the town, well, you wanna read that and make the motion, or?
When will all that work start?
Probably next, next summer.
Yeah, it's busy next summer.
That's why I didn't stop writing grants, I don't have time to do it, but.
Uh, motion for the, to approve the grant agreement resolutions, single grantee for the town of Fairhaven. Joe Gunter being the first name on the list.
And I will second the motion to approve the grant for the renovation of upstairs.
We will attach this, we will attach this resolution to the minutes. Does that sound good?
This was for two thousand, two hundred thousand, but this one.
This is just the, uh. This is the grant agreement resolution, just that we agreed to the provisions. And that Joe Gunter is a town manager and chief executive and is a designated person with overall administrative responsibility for the VCDV activities related to this grant. And the legislative body is us, if we wanna make, vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We're good. Okay. You got a line, you got a special line there someplace, John. Uh, discussion of police cruisers.
So at the last meeting, there was a request to talk about cruisers and the mileage going on, and potentially the chief's police car. So we put that on the agenda this way, to be noticed.
I think that if, we were talking back and forth and it, it made sense to me, if, if it's in your contract to drive a vehicle home, why drive, why put the mileage on a, on the new vehicle? And can you take a, a different vehicle home?
Oh, they just signed it.
What?
They just signed it, they had it signed.
Oh. Here, let me get, I'll get it, make it.
No, no.
It's okay. So that was, that, I think that was a discussion, is that, is that where we were at?
Well, I, I thought, I think it was just a question that we, we knew we got the new cruiser, we, we, the used cruiser, we just couldn't remember what we paid for it, so he said.
No, no, that's not.
That wasn't it?
It was the mileage on the cars. And we, the discussion was that, understanding this contract, the chief gets to drive a car home, but I personally don't feel it has to be the brand new car. I think there's a lot of extra miles going on it, and I think you should take one of the older cars home. And that's my feelings and right, wrong, or indifferent. It's a lot of mileage. We didn't, uh, if you're closer here, be different story, but that's a lot of miles all the time.
The only reason why I have a new car is cuz I drove a two thousand seven from oh six to two thousand seventeen, and that car was replaced after eleven years with a hundred and forty thousand miles. So the reason why.
Go ahead.
The reason why I ended up with that car at this point is just the way it was replaced. Two thousand nine, we got a new car, brought out, the chair, he says, the chief kept the new car?
No.
Mine's not too. Every car that's come up through is gone, whoever officers, they're singly officers, singly assigned officers to each car.
But they're not driving a home vehicle, they're not putting the amount of miles that'd be put on this car all the time.
Believe me, they put more miles on than I could, because I'm a working chief, and unfortunately, I don't get out on the road as much as I should.
Then the new car should be where the miles are being here, so people can use it.
Again, the other cars, regardless of what car we're talking about, are getting more miles than the new one, even when we take it home. What you'll find out of this, unfortunately, is I don't get on the road as much as I would like to.
No one else gets a vehicle to drive home. You're fortunate that you got one to drive home.
Nobody else is on call twenty-four seven, three hundred sixty-five days a week.
And I'll tell you, by you coming up through from where you live at eighty miles an hour, it's a, it's a, it's a liability for this town. If you have an accident, somebody gets hurt, this town is screwed. You travel up through that road very high speed. When you're coming up.
About three in the morning day, when I'm coming up.
I've seen you, I've seen you come up that road in the afternoon, in the afternoon. I'm not gonna argue, I'm not gonna argue.
That's not. That, that liability doesn't change whether you've got an old car or a new car.
No, I, I think that, I think the legitimate, I think it's legitimate to not be putting the miles on a new car. I think that's a reasonable, um, I do, I mean, I do, I don't know.
Cause I'm just going back to, is, is again, the last car I had was the new one in oh six, it was in oh seven, we got it. I drove the same car through, and it had a hundred and forty thousand. I did the math now, we've had the car twenty-three months, it has twenty-two thousand miles, that's less than a thousand miles a month. I have a brand new truck that I just leased, and I got it made first. I have a brand new truck that I just leased, and I got it made first, I have four thousand miles on it already, and I'm like, where are the miles coming from? That's more miles on my personal truck than the car that I use for work. And i- it's just a tool, I know it's new, but I have a two thousand seventeen Taurus with less miles, it's got thirteen thousand miles on it, is that now considered the new car? The cars get used, and that car is set up with a computer stand, it's set up with stuff in it that I can respond timely, and becomes an internet command system. All the cars are gonna be scheduled to be replaced, they get the same amount of miles. When I set the schedule out, if a guy calls in sick and like, "We need to drive that car," I'm doing miles management. And we, we historically have cars that last ten, twelve years of service, the cities, they go through them every five years. And so if you look at other agencies, their cars aren't lasting.
But it, it's hard to argue, in my mind, it's just hard to argue, driving the middle town or wherever you're going, um.
Well.
Well, excuse me. That we're putting that on the brand new rig as opposed to one of the other.
And I guess we're trying to go back to what I understand is Dale drives a Durango, puts more miles on I do, cause he's more available to do more patrol. Those guys are out more, because I'm a working chief, I, I'm here, I'm, I'm like, oh, we need to talk about cruisers things, I'm trying to get stuff together. It's, it's, I'm putting out little fires or managing grants or talking on the phone or investigating cases, I don't have the time to do the patrol I'd like to do. So my car's not getting out as much as patrol time, I'm not doing highway safety grants that much, I'm not doing that stuff. And I guess I'm just trying to lay out to the board is, is all the cars are getting equal usage, and they're all scheduled to be replaced. I didn't expect the car I'm driving now will be here when I'm eligible to retire. Historically, you guys have been around forever, cars we get, we keep. An oh seven, that were still in service in seventeen is unheard of in law enforcement. It's just, again, it's not, the, I have it in my mind mopped out, the miles are spread out between equally between the cars. And, and again, I'm not obsessive with it, Jay won it marked, okay, whatever, I like it better the markings on it. It got marked, because there was some concerns that I was doing the movies with it, like. You know, and that's not happening. Um, I get gas every five days, how many times you get to get your gas? Like, the gas is tracked every five days, that's unheard of. Other cruisers are getting the gas two or three times a week. And I'm not abusing it, it's not, yes, I'm taking it home, but, but in, in turn, I go to put my head on the pillow, pillow tonight, I'm the guy getting called. Unless I'm out of town, on vacation.
Still, you, it doesn't change if you have a different car.
No, it doesn't.
If you have one with more miles on it.
But I guess I'm trying to look at, what does it matter? We're still gonna have to replace a car at some point, whatever I'm driving. I could drive the Impala, the Taurus, the Durango, that car's still gonna be scheduled to be replaced. Again, the one I have, I'm figuring eleven years from now, on, on a schedule. We, we have the, the one Cherry's driving right now, the one that we just replaced, it's got over a hundred thousand miles on it. We've had it since two thousand nine. I mean, that's again, we're at eleven years of service, and historically, we keep cars that long, so, again, regardless, I'm just going back to the last car I had, was the brand new one I got. I drove it for eleven years, we sent it, we traded it in for the one we have, and it had a hundred and forty thousand miles on it. If you divide that out, it's less than your average lease per year, and I'm doing patrol work. And I'm going home. Again, the one knock I wanna hear is, you should be out on the road more, I wish I could be.
I don't, I don't expect that the chief to be on the road as much as the rest of you.
I'm a working chief, and I can cover shit.
I understand that, and, and that's not my point. And I, you know, I've already said what I'm gonna say, I'm repeating myself, I'm breaking my own.
I'll, I'll jump in, I, cause I, I don't have a strong feeling when we're in, I don't care what cruiser gets, gets taken home, quite, quite frankly. I don't have the concern that we're burning, the cruiser's there to be used, and then miles are gonna go on, and I think we're spending a whole lot of time nitpicking something that we shouldn't be.
What bothers me is that, that's a nine thousand dollar bonus to him, to drive that car home.
Okay, can I?
We, you wait a minute, and we cannot give him a ten ninety-nine.
Cause I'm exempt. But in turn, Jay, you're getting.
We're not gonna renegotiate what's already been done, that's not what we're doing here.
I don't get paid for coming out in the middle of the night, you're not getting overtime, you're getting free callouts for that service. Jay, you put the other car in my contract as much as you want to admit.
No, no, I didn't.
No, no, two thousand seven, you're sitting here, I can tell you.
Maybe a long time ago.
Two thousand seven, you said, you, you had, you did this in two thousand seven, you did this right here. And then, let me finish. We went executive session, you turned and said, can we just put it in my contract so I can go back to, to constituents to say it's a contract item? So now we're twelve years later, Jay, and we're fighting a battle for oh seven.
No, we're, we're, we're starting a new con, we started a new contract.
Okay, we have a contract, what's the issue?
And I voted against it, I'm telling you what it is, so.
I, I guess, I don't know what we're fighting over. Every two weeks, I get back to all something.
It bothers me that you get all this free mileage, you're getting, I'm sorry, it's nine thousand dollars more than what you're making.
Then start paying overtime for guys to come out.
That we do anyways.
You don't.
Look at the, oh, we gotta just look at payroll bill.
Well, let's not, let's not get out, we're talking about.
The topic, the topic that we're talking about is whether we drive a new cruiser, medium age cruiser, or an old cruiser. Oh. The explanation I heard was, hey, look, they cycle them out, just happens that this one is a newer version than what was going before. But I'm, I'm still sitting here saying, don't know what the big issue is, and why we're spending all the time beating this thing to death. That's just me, as I wanna hear from, what, what anyone else?
Say, there's nothing to say, it's just, yeah, everybody knows that. Whatever, done.
I'd like to have two weeks where I'm not getting something. I mean, I'm not sleeping at night over the weekend, it's something, it's, it's, I'm too many miles on the cars, it's, we're gonna get rid of the grants, we don't want the SRO. It's every two weeks, morale is ruined up there right now. I can do national night up, cause I don't care, you want me to be honest? I don't get thanked. It's every two weeks, this isn't fun. I got guys that don't wanna come to work here, this is wrong, I have a, a, outstanding staff, they're busting their ass here.
We're talking about cars.
No, but I'm talking in general.
More problems than you need to bring it up, and this is, I don't think it's the same thing.
I'm sorry, Bob.
I, I understand, I understand what you're saying, I, but.
It just doesn't matter.
It, it just made sense to me to do that, and I, it, everybody gets stuck, we're hammering on Sam about spending money. I don't know why it should be any different, and why you should feel any differently, it's the same thing. It's the same thing.
Comment from the peanut gallery?
Knock yourself out.
Sounds like you guys are micromanaging.
No.
The chief.
Too bad, too bad.
Guess who runs the town?
Now I'm, I'm sick and tired of hearing micromanaging.
Well, wait a minute.
I'm, now you're making me mad.
Tough, right? We have to take care of the budget here.
I got the floor. When Peter Hathaway came on, you, you gave a letter, hand delivered a letter to each of the, the, uh, the board members. Okay, and you said the number one thing, do not micromanage the town manager. Okay? You don't micromanage, you're, you hire a police chief.
This isn't micromanaging.
Yes, it is. You're, you're, you're complaining about what car he, uh, people take home.
Right.
It's his job to manage the, the workforce and the, the tools that he needs. You. You're, you just spent a half an hour talking about what car people take home, and you've, you've thrown issues of liability. Liability has nothing to do with what car he takes home.
No, and, and I, and I watch that.
Coming up through there eighty-five miles an hour, he's coming to a call.
It doesn't matter what car he takes home.
There's, there's a guy in Polton that can answer a call.
It doesn't matter, and I, I agree with you there. It, any car that's driving, if it's driving improperly, is.
It doesn't matter, it, it doesn't change the liability.
No.
It doesn't seem like there's a, there's anything that the, the, the board wants to make a change, is what I'm getting.
My reasoning is probably, Bob, that the next time his contract comes up, that's the time to address it.
Alright, then we're gonna move on. But I totally disagree with him.
Well, agree to disagree, I said comments from the peanut gallery.
Thank you, Bob.
And, and one thing, a lot of people in town do appreciate our police department, do please appreciate the extra mile. I, I know. I, I don't speak for just my, myself when I say that, no.
That was not part of that discussion.
I know, I know it wasn't, but I.
I don't see anything about what the department does.
Prefer to have that one thing.
Regular police department.
The point was that he felt that's how he felt.
That's how he felt, and I was just responding to how he feels and moral.
Okay, let's move on. Anything in the, the parking lot, we, we talked about the, the salt shed?
Town hall repairs.
Town hall repair.
I'll take questions.
Smoking ordinance?
Yeah, I'm gonna leave the, uh, if it's okay with the board, I'll leave the salt shed on there just to keep it on everybody's radar.
Okay.
The prioritization, I'll pull off for the next one. I think I gave you guys the, the draft, maybe, didn't I? No, I didn't, that's, I have, Bonnie is working on that one. But yeah, we're still moving forward with a lot of these. And I just got an offer from Jeff to, to help with the, the capital budget, cause he has some numbers that he can share with us.
The oil tank, we just wanna make sure that's on our agenda for our budget.
Yes.
When we do budget.
And that, that's coming up.
I still can't, we need some money for that.
Can we, on this salt shed replacement, can we do any work up there to get a place ready for the shed?
It's, we, they're gonna make you do a study. They're gonna.
Well, what do we gotta study? I mean, all we're doing is.
They're gonna do the historic, what they call historical.
You might be able to use the old stuff.
I, I found it, and I told them I had it when they said, no, they rejected it.
But there's nothing up there historical.
No, they.
Nothing's on, because the building wasn't on the historical.
No. No, they're gonna make you.
Make sure it's bones. Arrowheads and.
Yeah, but the garden's there, they already wrote it over there.
No, the better part is, a hundred and fifty feet away, they did a real archaeological study for the airport.
So that's, there's already a study.
And I believe they should use that, but he's saying they tried and that was rejected.
I actually pulled out the airport documents that I had, and I followed the study, and they said, no, they want.
How long ago was that done?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say eighty-four.
Well, but.
There might have been some arrows.
Artifacts.
But I mean, if there wasn't any done, any there then, how is it gonna be there now?
I agree with you, Ken, a hundred percent.
The state being the state, yeah.
Now's the point to ask, what's that gonna cost?
Yeah, that's why you just did this.
I know.
Thirty to fifty thousand.
It's, it's all probably twelve thousand.
Have they already picked out a person that's gonna do the study?
Well, we, we're not sure, we got the grant, right?
Oh, we got.
Thirty thousand?
We got a hundred and fifty two.
You got the grant.
We can.
So.
But we gotta come up thirty.
Move the state line, so we can lease, if we start getting these grinding uses up, that's what we wanna put for a base up there. And I mean, all we wanna do is just take, have the guy up there when we're pushing the stuff back, and he can check dirt as they're taking it out. Right?
I'll, I'll poke him.
Because we're going down, we're going down like, maybe eighteen inches, at the mouse will be eighteen inches. And, you know, we got all this free stuff that's gonna be coming in here.
I'd almost think you could just lay your filter fabric and go right on top of it.
Well, that's what I think too, if we don't have to dig. I mean, I, I don't.
And it won't be wet.
Yeah, I mean.
But I know, I don't know.
It's just we got all this material.
I just set my, I'd set my.
Dangerous situation.
I'd set my blocks down below four feet, just because they will.
Just so the building itself doesn't move.
Yeah, but that's apt, like, where are you gonna put the blocks in?
I put the blocks, I put the blocks in and then.
Oh, you know what, you should dig that dirt out, just so you can backfill the blocks with it.
So it's all there, so it's still there.
Right. Isn't that what, like over in New York, the forty N one, they just.
I just would like to see us get, be able to get started, cause we're, we're losing out on a lot of stuff here. I mean, if we can get this free material, that's gonna make a good base up there. And if you, why handle it three times?
We can't do the base and they just pay for the building?
No, no, gotta do the study before we put the base in.
But they're not paying for the base.
Let's get going on, let's figure.
Where are they?
Let's see if we can get at least a study done.
Under the parking lot?
Yep.
Uh, just, just an item that's not there, we talked about earlier this year about going out and advertising for a wastewater replacement position. That is, and then doing it in the fall, that is gonna be a very tough, I just, I saw an ad where I think someone else is looking for. Castle, and, and it made me think, I said, boy, we don't, we wanna get ahead of the curve.
Why don't we call Castle and ask if we can both hire the same person, and both work on half? That's not a crazy idea. I talked about it when we pulled, and he was hiring one. I, I think we're missing the boat, all three towns could have one guy overseeing.
Instead of, and, and help to free the cost.
I mean, maybe we could all use Polten's guy, and not hire somebody new compared.
Would the state pick up on, uh, the same name being, uh?
I don't think it's a problem.
They can, they can be the.
I, I only know in New York, but I definitely have a friend that, this is what he does privately, and he manages twelve.
At one time, didn't Pete take care of, Peter went and checked the one in Benson?
Probably.
When they first got operating up there.
None of us have extra money. If we, we could pay somebody twice as much, and we'd all be better off.
Let's check into it.
I'm just saying.
But I, I have.
I think we should post.
Oh, you have it posted?
I have, no, I have not posted, well, I could post a job, and then as we get applicants, it's like, well. I'm sorry, you can't be hired for four or five months.
No, no.
And that would.
Can't you just put it, can't you just put it in the?
Put it in the ad.
Put it in the ad, when.
Just, just concerned that that is a skill set that is gonna be very, very difficult to get.
I mean, he's getting done in May, correct, or June?
July.
July it is?
Yeah.
So. Maybe, maybe you wait until January to start posting it, I don't know.
And I'm not saying.
I agree with what you're saying, they, that one in Castle's been in the paper for, it's been in there for a month.
And I'm not saying that you still might have to hire another working body. These guys might, that guy might just be a chief, he might not actually do a ton of work.
But if he's in there doing a testing.
Yeah.
As manager.
Good point.
It's worth looking into.
Okay, once again, we gotta look at that when it comes to budget time, cause we gotta add, because, well, we're talking about hiring the guy three months ahead of time.
We should start that discussion.
Remember? So we're looking at hiring somebody in April.
If we can.
If we can.
For wastewater?
Yeah, we're gonna have him in here for three or months before Pete left. Three or four months, right? So I mean, we're looking at April, that you're gonna hire somebody. So once again, we're.
Well, if you put it in the ad, that's a, to start, to start.
April first, or whatever.
I can, I was holding off this because it's in overtime to, but if.
No, it's on paper, it's just.
It's a suggestion.
I have, I have, I have a draft of that, and it's, it is ready to go.
This isn't micromanaging either.
I know it's not.
We're just asking you to do something.
I might be.
Put that on the paper now.
Call Castle then, seriously though, I think it's worth reaching out. And if we need to have a meeting between the boards, I don't think that would be.
I don't think, I don't think Castle, he's so overwhelmed that he's.
Well, I think Castle's board might, like.
But see, they're, they're not hiring, they're hiring a worker.
What I'm saying is we could both hire the next level up. And, and then maybe have another guy that works part-time both places, I, I don't know how it would work, I'm making this all up as I go along.
You're doing a good job.
It makes sense, you might be able to get a different quality.
And if we couldn't.
We might be able to actually replace Pete.
That's where.
Pete's big, big shoes to fill.
Yes, there, and it's gonna.
I think we all need to know that.
It is, we, we already know.
I think we might wanna do it sooner than later. Just, just to have Pete give him.
Like if you found the right guy, I don't think anybody's really posting.
Well, I mean, that's, that's one of the reasons why I moved Jim out, is so Pete could have some extra money there to, to help this guy come in. I mean, it was two different things.
Right.
I, I needed a guy I thought Peter could use that money that Jim's getting paid.
Yeah, we did, six months.
Six months, we put six months.
Three to six.
That's not our budget, that's the, that's the water sewer.
That's right.
When we did that, we added money for an extra guy.
Yeah, but then.
For six, four months, four months. For six, four months. Four months. Six months.
They wanted a year and we said six months when we're, when we're all done. That put us probably saying we put the posting up around October. Only brought up the fact is I'm looking, it looks like they're struggling in Castleton to find interested people. And we're not the only ones that are gonna be out there looking.
It's gonna be a struggle.
I'm telling you, ask that question.
You're looking at, if you did six months, you're looking at February. So, you know, I mean, it's not that far fetched, I guess, if you don't have to really start looking at it.
Not that far down the road.
Moving right along.
You always gotta start something.
Sorry.
All right. That, that it on the, on the parking lot? Everybody all good? Roundtable? Glenn?
You covered all of them except one that I had here. I was looking at the bathroom down at the playground that still has quite a ways to go. I was thinking, wasn't ready to throw my hands up because I know we've got a lot of stuff going on, but, but that's still, it'd be nice to have it all ready. So that next year when we just hook things up, I turn the water on and go.
I have to admit I did throw my hands up. I got a call on it and I went down and saw it and I, I was under the impression, maybe wrongly, that it was installed fully last meeting.
Last meeting that the wire, the water's hooked up, power's hooked up.
But I mean, that is not in usable shape whatsoever.
We got the stuff in last week to hook up the sewer.
That's just to dump it.
Yeah.
But you can, you can blame that on me. There's some cleanup. I kinda dropped the ball, so blame that on me. That's.
There's some, we still need to clean here.
There's, there's a, it's a long ways from ready for prime time. When I went down and looked at it and I'm going, okay, folks, and, and we're not looking to beat anybody up. But by next summer, next recreation things we have going on, it would be nice to have them bathrooms working.
Will we, will we be able to move that? For, for the concerts in the park?
Yeah.
Supposed to.
That was one of the options.
Well, I was, I just, you know.
The only thing that I gotta figure out is the handicap ramp.
Oh, okay.
That's a pretty good sized handicap ramp.
Attaching, unattaching.
I'm not quite sure how I'm gonna carry that up.
Okay, it's, it's extreme. Well, yeah, we can't use it without it.
That's right.
So, it might be a little damaged, you know, but just.
Probably, probably have to buy a new equipment.
Yep, what? The rescue squad.
No problem.
What are we doing? How are we gonna do the money situation with the rescue squad? I mean, it's been, the budget was passed for July.
Typically, how much would go?
Well, what I'm saying is we're, we're almost a quarter of the year already. Are we gonna hold that money?
But they just do quarterly payments, right?
Yeah, but I mean.
Could let a quarter go.
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
They're trying.
We've already checked because it was voted on. It's still legal. We're not in any violation if we don't give them the money.
I talked to an.
So my feel, so are we gonna hold the first quarter?
We already have.
We already, we already have.
So.
How long?
Yeah, do we start, or are we gonna wait until they got a program up and running before we start talking about giving them money? Or what, I mean, if they got something started now, that's what I'm saying. So, we gotta figure something.
It feels like they have the same amount of coverage that they had before the shutdown, whatever you wanna call it.
They're.
They talked a big game about 18 people and everything, but they never had that level of coverage.
They have 18. I'm just.
But not in the recent history.
But I don't want them. I just don't want those guys to be strapped to the point where they can't hire somebody because we haven't given them money. That's the point. I guess I'm.
Well, you think about $50,000.
It doesn't cover a lot. I mean, but what I'm saying is, we're here to represent the town too. I mean, we gotta look at everything, but do we start?
I think they're.
Next quarter, first quarter, or second quarter and give them the money for that?
We're gonna get another report the 27th. Why don't we have it on the warrant? Give one quarter. And then we could definitely sign it off that day if we're comfortable. If not, we'll pull it.
I feel a little better if we would have had our representative here talking about it or the new financial person with the questions we have about a little more transparency on where the funds are coming from, where they're going.
So that's why it'd be a good idea for her to come, for Mrs. Ord to come.
Yeah, I think she'll be.
For that 27th. It's a little strange to me that a person would, as the director from Fairhaven, rather go to a big one and she wouldn't come to talk to us. Neither here nor, that's not our decision. But I'm just concerned, I just don't wanna, I don't want them not to have operating money if they're getting the things rolling. That's your only concern.
No, I agree.
That's all I'm asking. That's all I'm.
I don't think we can technically withhold that payment, can we? It's been voted on. We can delay a payment, but I think at some point if they're operational, they don't have to go.
We, we could pay it all at once at, you know, June 30th.
Up next.
Next year. It's, it's not designated that we have to do it quarterly. We do it quarterly for our comfort.
Because there was another town that.
My question is, we did the next quarter and gave them the next quarter. That give them operating. Because they are getting rolling. I mean, they're, they're trying, they've gotten people, they've gone through their units, they've done what they had to do. And, you know, let's not kill a good thing if we got something going here. I mean, let's not punish them because they had a bad time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should.
I'd just like to know what they, and I asked it last time and I didn't wanna, you know. But I'd like to know what their plan is next year.
Gotta have a plan.
They gotta have a plan, but I would think pretty soon for next year.
I think one thing we should request is they come here at least once a month. Somebody comes here once a month.
That's probably a good idea.
And just so we know what's where it is. I mean, we still gotta watch out for what.
Let's put it on the agenda for a quarterly payment and.
Or hear what they have to say to see what we can do and if we have it there.
Put it after their presentation.
Right, and we can put.
You don't have to sign the warrant. We can yank that part of the warrant, whatever.
We can hold that thing.
Or don't put it in a warrant, just put it, put it on the agenda to say whether, oh, yeah. Got a warrant. Well, it would just be two weeks later.
Yeah, but I'm just saying we should have it so we can, it can be discussed if we decide we're gonna do this. So it's on the warrant so we can make a motion to do it. That's the only thing I'm saying.
Okay.
I just don't want us, whatever. I guess that's about it. Oh, no. VLCT meeting. Are you going to that?
The.
The business meeting?
Oh, yeah, the one you sent out.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to that.
Okay, because we gotta sign, we got to make a.
Right.
We gotta designate you as their voter.
Well, he or anybody else that wants to go, so.
Yeah, we have to have somebody to go in that can vote.
Or Glenn wanted to go, he can vote.
Well, we just want. And I mean, that's all it is. It's just a delegation form, but it's gotta be sent in.
You both, yeah, you both, anybody can go to the meeting and anybody can go and sit in in the business meeting and you, you just have to have somebody designated to vote and then.
Just vote correctly.
Yeah, I mean, I just, because it says here, it's gotta be in the middle of September, so I just. I'll make a motion to designate Joe or town manager to be our delegate.
Voting delegate.
Voting delegate.
Second.
Just to, I want to get some discussion. Since when you're going from Vermont League City and Towns, why wouldn't we have a select board person voting versus the town manager for the town?
Because in the past, a lot of people from the selectmen ever went.
Well, no, but I, but I mean, that's what I'm saying is, I don't agree, I, I, I don't agree with the selectmen not going. When I first looked at that, my natural decision, we're going through quite a bit, I would expect the chairman of our board would be the first person that I would have there. And if they were tied up, then one of the other selectmen would go, would then, would then go, uh, uh, it just seems we call the Vermont League City and Towns for advice all the time. They're, they, they come and talk to us. It doesn't feel right. It feels like we didn't do the right thing if we send Joe to handle it for us. No, I, I mean, I just.
My, my feeling is the reason why we send Joe, because he's the one that's dealing with it. He knows all the stuff that's going on. He knows the financial part of it. He knows stuff that we don't know. Where if you're gonna vote on something, let's have the, you know, our most knowledgeable person up there. I mean, I'm not saying that we don't know what's going on, but there's a lot of things he knows that we don't. That's, that's.
A lot of details that we have.
Right.
Um, all of them. Which is why I was saying that anybody can go to that meeting.
Right.
You can confer with any, anybody and then have one person designated voter. And that's kinda why we kicked it over to the town manager.
I have no problem with going to go before you give them the designation.
He can sit with Joe and talk to us.
I, I have no problem with going and I'm not looking to appoint myself as, you could still, I'm just have the question, as the newbie, I can play the rookie card still here. Of saying, well, I, I would expect a select board member to be there and be the one voting, uh, for the town Fairhaven. Right? Because I don't believe the town managers from the other towns are the, are the designated.
Yeah, they are.
It, it goes back and it goes, it's all, it's all back and forth.
But you may have just gotten yourself elected designation.
And I was just complaining about how many dollars it was eight from you, but, uh, I have no.
It's worthwhile, though.
I, I.
Might get a lot of goodies too, we used to.
How will I?
This isn't for registration for the town fair. This is just to get a designator, a voter, a delegate for voting.
What's the motion?
To, to have Joe be the voting agent. Any other, any other discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Perfect.
Everybody aye.
Now, you are gonna go then.
Oh, I'm, I'll still, I, I'll still go.
Whispering is eager.
It must be a good name.
Tell me how to go.
Usually turkey. It used to be. Will we get another, will we get another form, Joe? For people that wanna go?
I'm sorry.
Will we get another form for the people that wanna go?
Registration hasn't come out yet, but yeah, it's coming.
I've been through before. I've enjoyed.
Well, I was gonna say, so what we, to, to that point, when you send in our registration, let's, let, give anyone who'd like to go names, we give them to Joe and he'll register us all?
Yeah, that's what we're, yeah, that's what we do.
Perfect.
See, this just says right here, this is not, this is not a form for the town fair resignation.
It's who's been.
Registration. October 7th. It's the road forming you saw earlier.
October 7th.
They have equipment there. They have a lot of stuff up there.
Well, they covered the latest, like the ditching and that they're requiring everything. You get the latest and greatest, so hope you have.
Thing else?
Yeah, just one thing.
Oh, we, we.
Yep.
We voted on it.
Okay, you voted. I noticed I'm riding up and down. I was riding up and down North Main Street quite a lot lately, going around and, and looks like the sewer man holes, covers and stuff are in need of repair there, two or three of them.
On North Main?
North Main. North Main.
We just, we just put hot mix in there. We just filled it, filled them around. I don't think they need any more out, anything else.
They're pretty rough right now, I tell ya. Just dodge them. Well, if you go down through, I can show you how it goes, John. When you're going down North Main Street, this one's here, so you go like this and then you come around like that.
There's one.
Here, and you come around like that, and then you come down through a little. I guess my other half nervous. And then you do that. That's the way you get around them. No, I wasn't going around them. I was straddling them.
There, there is, there is one that we gotta redo. Just make sure you don't hit them because we don't pay for your time.
That's why I'm straddling them.
I just put four new tires on my white car.
You have nothing.
Anything else?
That's it.
Uh, anything for the wire on the school stuff?
Sorry.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes. He says it's fine. Yeah, he says there's really nothing, um. Oh, I didn't get that time for this, I'm sorry.
So that'll be on the next.
It will be. I thought I forgot something, but you're okay.
Just get that right back.
Yeah, he, uh, he came back and said that there's, there's nothing to worry about. The, the only thing he brought to our attention that I think everybody probably noticed was that the school retains the right to use the, the partner, which I don't think anybody was gonna argue about anyway, so that, that was his only comment.
And they refused to pay the other $1,600, is that correct?
They did, yes. For the.
Parking lot? So where's that money coming from?
Uh, we'll find it in the DPDW budget.
Can we just patch it for bad, for bad.
They retain the right to use what?
The playground.
Playground.
Talking about.
The playground.
Now, on that bid, Joe, we have to do all the work. I thought we were under, I was under the impression I just had to pop the, the asphalt out and they were doing the grading.
You're digging it out and he, what the hell are we talking about? Talk to Joe. Yeah, we have to use the equipment to clear it out.
Yeah, just pop the asphalt.
Yeah, he should be, he should be grading it and setting.
He's grading it, setting.
I, I didn't want to set the grading and then have that be wrong. And then, then it just leaves into trouble, so no.
So you said finish great?
He's gonna, he's gonna make sure the forms are good. But we're gonna, he's gonna be an excavator to tear this stuff up.
When is that gonna happen?
Joe, I don't know. Uh, Joe, what's his name? Tomasi? Joe Tomasi. He's gonna coordinate with Sam.
We've got two weeks.
Oh, we do have two weeks. August 28th, I'll get to Joe.
And Sam is on vacation when?
I'm on this week.
Today.
Weird vacation. A weird place to be spending a vacation. Well, that one I'd like to see done before we start having kids run up and down there.
Yeah, yeah, hundred percent.
Or put it off to next year.
We'll get it done. If we put it off till next year, the money disappears. I, I hate to ask voters for money and then I use it for what we said we would, that, that we smashed along to, so I'll get it done.
We gotta grab costs.
We don't have any vacations that they could do it between now and, you wouldn't have a vacation you could do it on till April.
Probably won't be warm enough to do it.
Well, even in April, I probably wouldn't be able to.
The worst part is they're gonna have to stand there. If they're pouring it on a school day, they'll have to stand there and watch it. Wait, so they don't get handprints and footprints.
Footprints. No, Joe, Joe, Joe put the one to him.
Get out of your kids. Crosswalk painting? Yeah, we'll get on some of those. Sure there's something else. Airport was all done?
No, no, no. That I gotta call the state because there's water coming into that, that, um, culvert that goes underneath the interstate. We got water coming in there. I mean, I can pump that and a day later it's.
Full again. Did you ever get the drain hitched up there?
I haven't, I haven't been able to find it.
People don't know where it is.
I think it's gotta be a conduit or something.
Oh, there's, there's a pipe there. There's an eight inch pipe there and we put the hose down it, it flushed right out, but then it fills right back up. And I took a walk all the way down through there and I couldn't, because supposedly it comes out into that brook and I couldn't find it. Where daylighted out. So I'm hoping there's a plan somewhere that tells me exactly where everything is.
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
Uh, did you sign that to Joe?
Yeah. All right, that, that's not a big.
Yeah. No, I was up there last week and we done, it just filled up as fast as we could dig it.
That's not a new problem. I mean, you've just inherited a legacy.
Well, I, I mean, that's the thing. If, if I can find the pipe, I can, I can hook it up.
Is the water in the tunnel below our service lines now?
No. That's why that stays wet, because when that. Because that's why that stays wet, because when that water comes up in that tunnel, that ditch instantly gets wet. You drain that down, that cul, the, the ditch is dry. So if I can get that to drain out of there, then I won't have that wet problem anymore.
Because that was one of the things in our water report.
The water started coming after they did that last project.
Yeah, or for a sewer line.
Yeah, they-
They busted the pipe off.
They must have broke a drain line.
It had to be something because the water wasn't in that, in that tunnel before. Until Bowen put the, that system in up there.
But now there's groundwater. There's something about it being the tunnel. I don't understand why it's a big deal. Because it's a sealed line. But because you have a sewer and a water line next to each other.
I think your concern is if one was to break, it could, it could-
Contaminate it.
Contaminate the other one.
But, so-
Plus you couldn't be able to-
There was a problem with that.
You couldn't get in there to fix it if you, but you pumped it for two days. We found where it comes out of the tunnel.
And we can't just-
Well, we just can't get it to, to find where it goes.
You know, the pipe, they walk it off, it's out in the middle of the road.
All right, I, I- It's again, I, I need, I need some blueprints.
We have somebody on, we have somebody on the program. We're all set. We got the machine to dig it, so we're all set.
I just wanted to see if the state had a blueprint, because they put it in, obviously, so.
I just wanted to make sure we were-
Oh, that's right, because the state put the tunnel in there.
Yeah.
You guys talk in riddles.
Code.
Yeah, but you do a good job straightening all up, you know what I mean? It's pretty clear when you get your paperwork done.
I'm going to start editing an hour tonight.
Nothing, nothing that I say is really important, so you don't have to-
Thank you.
We don't know what we're doing with the sidewalk yet, but if you could salvage the slate.
Well, he already done it. From up here?
Yeah.
It's all downtown, right?
It's all down there and, and it's not stuffed in a corner, busted up.
It's on pallets.
I asked that question earlier.
Good.
What do we do with that?
Uh, you know, at some point, at some point we could, we could, at one point we were going to do-
Around the monument.
Monument, that, that stretch of sidewalk. We're going to do a slate, so there's some slate in the, you know, that was one thought. Then we did, we did it on First Avenue, the first-
Sidewalk at first.
Pelk Avenue, Pelk Avenue, yeah. Yeah, so-
Right now you've decided to replace slates?
Just to hold on to it.
Just to have, replace it, somebody-
And, uh, don't sell it to somebody. That happened the last time.
Don't, right?
Don't. That's micromanaging. All money.
And they brought it back and-
No, they didn't bring it back. They didn't, they, they paid twelve dollars for the whole bunch and everybody thought it was wonderful. Um, it, oh, I know. Uh, we got to talk about sewer plan at some point here.
Do we really?
Yes, we do.
That's the end of everything.
Even if we're not going to talk, even if we're not going to-
Even if we're bringing, we don't want to do anything.
We're going to bury our heads in sand. We got to admit we're going to do that.
I want to mention bringing, um, Aldridge Elliott back. You guys want to talk to them one more time?
We've got paperwork in front of us.
Okay.
We should probably talk, get some sort of consensus before we talk to them.
Is that on the agenda for next?
Probably. It, it probably ought to be because it's going to start getting real busy and we're not going to have, we're not going to-
Light discussion.
Light discussion, yeah.
Because if the board decides to come forward, they're going to start posting for bonds.
Right.
Three weeks. Oh, I got that.
I know that Elliott wanted that done in, in, as a November vote, but I don't think we're there. We're not anywhere near there yet. We talked about, oh, the other thing, um, do we have anybody going to the planning committee, regional planning commission meetings at this point? That's my knowledge. Well, we should, I'll volunteer to do that until we get somebody. Because we should have somebody there to say, hey, wait a minute, don't do that very-
What did they do to family?
Who knows?
Okay.
Probably, it's more neglect than, than, uh, what they do.
You just, you're catching what you said.
They don't, they don't think past bird's eye.
Yeah, I, I do have a good relationship with Tyler over there. He's helped me out with a couple of grants and I can see him at a conference. I want two messages. Oh, you said, you know, from yesterday? Um, they definitely know we're here, man. I poke, I poke him in the mouth.
Good. That's exactly what you got to do and you got, you got to keep reminding them because-
We get forgotten on this side of the stick.
Yes, we do.
We don't, it shouldn't happen.
All right, that's all I got.
Motion to pay the general fund warrant, thirty-six thousand, two hundred fifty-four dollars and thirty-five cents.
Second? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pay the payroll warrant, thirty-three thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-one cents.
Second.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
The checkbook balance is five hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred seventy dollars and twenty-six cents. We must be getting ready to pay the school thing.
Yeah, I would guess so.
That's as of-
Whenever those financial-
Okay.
They're coming second.
They are, right?
Yes, well, those are as good as yesterday. Jenny does all the bills.
I think it's today.
And then she tells me to go.
Second.
No.
We don't need nothing on that. You're just telling us.
Yep.
What are you telling me that for, John? He wasn't a motion. I didn't want that. You just, don't, don't, just don't. We're all done making motions.
Except this one. Not the one out the door.
Executive session.
No, we got an executive session.
Uh, do we have anything in executive?
Not unless you guys want to go. The, the union negotiation was canceled. I did give you their draft.
I'll be putting this for a few minutes. For the, for the negotiation for the contract.
Few minutes?
Won't be long. Won't take me long. I already discussed it with one person in here.
All right.
He knows where I'm going.
I'm John.
Make the motion.
Under motion one, uh, board agrees that premature general public knowledge or possible litigation gets the town put in law.
That's not going to be that.
Full motion two to enter an executive session. Discuss confidential attorney, quiet communications, be as hard as legal services to the board.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're in an executive session as soon as-